Good evening. I'd like to call to order the August 5th, 2020 Joint Virtual Workshop to discuss the 2020-2021 School Reopening Plan. We are meeting via WebEx at 1:05 PM. Participants in attendance today include the School Reopening Task Force, the District Leadership Team, and the School Committee. This workshop will be televised and recorded. It may be viewed live on Comcast Channel 22, Verizon Channel 34, or you can view it at www.youtube.com/TooksberryTV. Public input and participation is welcomed and encouraged after the initial presentation to the School Committee and after any questions the Committee may have. We're hoping that will be around 2:00 PM. To participate, please call 978-771-0819. That number should also be on your screen. Please also note for the record, when you do get through, in accordance with public meeting laws, you please need to have your name and address for the record. Before we get to the presentation on behalf of the School Committee, I just wanted to express our sincere gratitude to the members of the Reopening Task Force and the District Leadership Team, rather, for their dedication and hard work that has already gone into this plan. There is still a tremendous amount of work to go, and I know you guys are all in it for what's best. I want to be clear about one thing. A decision has not been made as to what the direction the Tooksbury Public School System will begin in reopening in the fall. The impetus of this meeting is to continue to seek public input and engagement regarding the plans. Today will be an opportunity for the public to learn about the process, deliberations of the task force, as well as the groundwork that has culminated in the initial plan that was sent to families a few days ago. A plan that was required by DESI to include remote, hybrid, and all-in instruction, with a recommendation by DESI to focus on all-in instruction. That does not mean we are solely focused in on all-in instruction, because we are not. We are focused on developing all three models, with the understanding that we also have to work with all of our employee groups to provide what we believe will provide a safe environment for students, staff, and families this fall. Finally, as you view today's presentation, I hope you do so with an open mind and an open heart, just as we are on the School Committee. No one seems to be certain about anything during these times, and I ask that you be mindful what your idea of what you think is best and safe may not be shared with your neighbor. What I am certain about is everyone's desire today to do what is in the best interest for students, and today is a big part of that. So, thank you to all of you. As a last reminder, please wait until the presentation is over to call in, and also, please turn down your TV when you get there, so we don't have any distortion. One final note, I'd be remiss if I did not thank the many parents and teachers that have reached out, telephone, via email, or hopefully today, as we continue to undergo this process. The surveys are good. There will be certainly more to come as we continue to navigate this plan, but I just wanted to make sure that I remind the public how grateful that we are for your participation. So, with that being said, I'd like to turn the floor over to Superintendent Malone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for everyone in attendance and for all of those of you at home. We hope this is an informative process. We're looking for your feedback and information. And what we're going to present to you over the next hour or so is kind of in line with what our thinking has been, what our process has been, what are the elements that we are considering within the planning, and what information we can certainly provide the School Committee in their very big decision that they're going to have to make by tomorrow. I'm getting a little feedback, so I'm going to come off camera and see if that helps. I think that's a little bit better. But I hope everyone's seeing at home the presentation screen. And we're going to talk through kind of how we got here today and what we need to do moving forward. So, there is a great deal of specific information in this presentation. We have taken on the process of soliciting comments and ideas from parents and staff. We hope that most of them are answered within this presentation. Some of them, although being strongly considered and understood, final decisions have not been made because of timeliness and other pieces of that nature. But we hope that the community sees this as a thorough process and something that we've put a great deal of work into at Central Office. And just to remind everyone kind of where we're at, as we ended the last school year in the spring, which was certainly a very disjointed year that had us all going out of school in March and then proceeding through a remote learning experience that started off with enrichment and then moved on to power standards, did not involve necessarily grading or attendance-taking. Again, I don't think anyone at the state level or below thought that that might go on that long. I think we learned a lot through that process about what does make a high-quality remote learning experience. But certainly, where we left off in the spring, no matter which model is decided on to start with for the School Committee, we want to make sure that we take those lessons learned and apply them to ensure that we have high-quality instruction, no matter which model we take on. Our reopening planning really began last April as we began to think about what school reopening would be in the fall, what elements we would need to concentrate over the summer, specifically looking at our facilities and what extensive cleaning we could do, what supplemental cleaning we could do, what other pieces we would want to do to ensure our buildings were ready to receive students, and working regularly and daily with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in anticipation that they would specifically, either through themselves or through the Governor, be dictating which realm schools in Massachusetts would be returning to this fall. The specific statement coming out of DESE is that we would expect 85% of all reopening decisions to be made at the state level. And that's how we approached it. Preparedness level to make sure we were prepared to respond to whichever way the state had made that determination. And in anticipation of that, we looked at multiple scenarios, prepared our buildings, thought about enhancing remote instruction. What was clear was that we knew there would be a need for remote instruction at a minimum for medically fragile students who may not be able to return to school. So, we put a high emphasis on making sure that was robust and began to plan also what type of summer camp, summer special education services could be done, all of those elements. And that went on through April, May, and June. In that preparing process, what changed was a determination at the state level in mid-July that the determination of how schools would open in the fall would be determined by local school committees and no longer the state. This was a fairly significant change for all of us. Although we had done significant planning in preparation to respond to whatever decision made, what we were not able to do was certainly encompass community involvement, doing other elements to see where people felt we should return, explore options. And also, what was introduced at that time in the Fall Reopening Guidance from the State were the three options for each district to look at, which were remote learning, which we had already been working on, a full return of students with appropriate safety precautions, which again, we had extensively looked at and thought about and looked at purchasing materials and done a great deal of planning on. And a third model, which was a hybrid model, which was really the first we had really heard of that option. And the state asked us, as you see there in Step 1, for a preliminary plan that was due to them on July 31st. What had happened before the determination that districts would be making this decision is we had formed a community-wide task force to help us prepare for the decision by the state, which their mission immediately changed once the state changed its guidance to preparing the School Committee in the district to make the appropriate decision in the best interest of students. That reopening plan, we have shared out publicly. It is again, a preliminary plan. It looked at a brief description of the three models. We were directed as a task force by the DESE Commissioner to prioritize full in-person learning, which is work that the task force took on immediately, and establish a feasibility piece on that. That was outlined in that preliminary plan summary. Some specific elements that we found were challenging for a full in-person, challenging but could be overcome, were elements around food services and serving lunches with the distance restrictions involved in eating, transportation with the restrictions put on numbers of students that would be allowed on a bus and how to manage that. And the difference in opinions from surveying from parents compared to teachers as to what they felt would be the best option to look at in reopening. And what we saw in that preliminary plan is that parents fairly overwhelmingly approved the all-in or hybrid model with some form of student direct interaction with the schools, in that the teachers actually preferred almost to the same percentage an actual remote experience for students returning to school. So, that's somewhat conflicting information from some significant stakeholders. And certainly, that is a challenge we continue to face moving forward. The Comprehensive Reopening Plan, which is due on August 10th, is actually part of what we're doing today. We've expanded some of the elements from the preliminary plan. We've worked on some additional aspects in the task force, from response to COVID cases, to supplemental cleaning plans, to other aspects to really develop a comprehensive reopening plan. And part of that is to share some of that information and thinking at this point with all of you so that we can get input from everyone before we finalize what that comprehensive reopening plan will look like. In addition to that, will be a decision by the School Committee as determined in a School Committee meeting tomorrow at 3:00 PM as to which of the three models, remote, hybrid, or all-full in, the district will start in. So, that kind of lets us know where we're at and where we're going. Go on to the next slide.
Okay. It is not playing nice with me. I'm not quite sure why, so let me just come down to the bottom.
And I can go while Ms. Reagan's coming up with that slide. I mean, a big piece of this is a huge thank you to the Reopening Task Force for their dedication and support. We've been meeting weekly to really discuss some of the finer points and considerations. And not that we've come up for answers for every question, but we've considered a lot of information, considered a lot of options. And I really appreciate all the open communication between all these stakeholders and would really like to thank all of them. Certainly, our parents, Bridget Garabini, Monica Johnson, and Rich Russo, thank you so much for taking the time to express where you're coming at from a parent's point of view and helping us understand what's going to be best for families. From the School Department, two School Committee members, Jamie Cutlass and Scott Wilson, Brenda Regan, Dave Libby, Rick Pelletier, Karen Baker O'Brien, John Marshawn, Deborah Lee Mugford, Felicia Chenovich, and also Alexis Bosworth, Andy Long, Ronnie Druin, Kelly Constantino, Louis Giuseppe, Susan Caliendo, Josh Bilado, Julian Fabiano, and Sarah Gilad. So, as you can see, we have all the unions represented for the personnel that are involved in some of these decisions. And we certainly appreciate all their efforts, sharing their expertise. And a big piece of that is their ability to bring back the information from the task force thinking to their individuals in the most expeditious way possible. A huge thank you to our personnel from the town, our town manager, Richard Montori, Police Chief Ryan Columbus, Fire Chief Mike Hazel, Public Health Director Susan Sawyer, and Town Nurse Ervie Iguala. So, they were instrumental in helping us understand the community concerns and really thinking holistically as a community, not just as a school district. Another group we'd also want to thank is our District Leadership Team, who behind the scenes has been doing a lot of the specific writing and working on some of these plans and really thinking through what these three models are going to look like in a school, for a student, for a staff member, for a parent. And we appreciate all their work. And as you can see, our principals and administrators are all listed here. They've all done a great work. You know, you have to understand, this team, at one time, for almost a two-month period of time when schools were closed, were meeting daily. Every day, we would meet for at least an hour to look at how we can best support students despite being in the spring in a remote setting, how we can support staff, how we can support families. So, I appreciate all of their work. They've done a great deal of work. This includes Saturdays and Sundays, and their dedication is immense. Thank you to all.
Okay, Superintendent Malone, the next slide that we're looking at is really defining what we're doing in the next through August 10th. So, Step 2, as Chris talked about, it's our comprehensive plan and the three models. So, I think the single point of confusion that we've dealt with more often at the Central Office is, what does that mean? So, for people that are watching today, a comprehensive reopening plan must, it must include all three models with an emphasis on what does the all-in-person model look like with these restrictions? What would a hybrid, partial-in-person model like with restrictions? And then, what would a remote learning model look like should the whole district need to use remote learning or individuals choose a remote learning option? The Tooksbury School Committee for our Step 2, our comprehensive plan, needs to approve the whole plan because at any given time, the district may need to pivot from plan all-in-person, hybrid, remote, or back and forth throughout the school year. And then, their vote will be on which of the three models we would start the 2021 school year in, knowing that prior to our first day start, again, that could change. So, this is why the approval of the whole plan is necessary with a vote on the reopening model. Okay, so there's guidance around classrooms and classroom expectations. People know that this means students and teachers will be in masks. Mask breaks will need to occur in order to sustain all-day wearing of masks, and mask breaks need to be six feet apart. Transparent masks have been suggested by DESI for students or even staff that may need them. Student distancing restrictions and minimum requirements pertaining to all areas of the school and in our classrooms with all students facing forward, we must maintain a six-foot teacher instructional area in the class, in some area of the class. And students will stay six feet apart in all public areas of the school. That would be the hall, the calf, recess, arrival, dismissal, et cetera. So, what are those health and safety requirements around those restrictions? It's really important to note that all those key health and safety requirements should be used together to be effective. Masks alone aren't totally effective, but together with handwashing and regular hand sanitizing and good hand hygiene, distancing, and then, of course, our working together with our families and staff self-screening, self-reporting, and staying home when not feeling well. So, how does that apply to the Tooksbury Public Schools? While the guidance requires students in grades 2 through 12 to be in masks, Tooksbury Public Schools is expecting all students and staff will wear a mask and appropriate face covering at school. That a minimum of three to six feet distancing is required in all learning models and will be maintained. That handwashing routines will be established at all schools at all grade levels. And then, new hand sanitizing stations have been purchased for all of the schools so that the availability of hand sanitizing is in all areas of our schools. So, let's look at some of our classrooms. Part of our feasibility study was to, first, can we fit our students back with these restrictions? And I'm happy to tell you that, and I'm going to just show you a couple of samples of our schools. We looked at the three-foot model, and we looked at the six-foot model. And in the classroom, the distances are allowable. You can see, for example, at the Heathbrook and Doing, kindergarten class at six feet apart would be 12 to 15 desks or tables. And at three feet apart, 20 to 22 desks and tables. If you look at the Trahanan North Street, again, if we're looking at a three-foot, this would be the three-foot distancing classroom. We can fit 22 to 23 desks. And at the six-foot distancing, 12 to 17 desks. So, well within half of our student cohorts. If we look at the Ryan and the Wynn at three feet apart, when we talk about three feet apart, it's chair edge to chair edge. We can fit 22 desks plus or 24 desks plus. We know if we get to that all-in place of three feet apart, we can also utilize the back counter area or take that counter out to put more desks if needed in both the Wynn and the Ryan. If we look at six feet apart, both the Ryan and the Wynn classrooms allow for 12-plus desks at six feet apart. And you can see at the high school, we're looking at some classrooms where the desks are three feet apart, 22 to 26 desks plus, depending on the space. And at six feet apart, I'm sorry, I made a misspoken, at three feet apart, at six feet apart, 11 to 12 desks plus, again, depending on the size of the classroom. If we look at some of our special ed classrooms district-wide, we can see at the Ryan, we can fit 12-plus desks because most of our special ed classrooms are full-size classrooms, or all of them are there. At the Wynn, we have ranging from smaller spaces to larger spaces. So, our special ed, small group or DLC classrooms would have four to 10 desks plus. At the high school, we can fit seven desks at six feet apart in a special ed classroom. And you can see at the Doing Integrated PK, we can fit 10 spaces for our little integrated preschoolers K2. At both schools, we can fit six to eight student spaces at K2, and 3-4 can fit six to eight special ed student spaces. If we look at our cafeterias, keeping in mind it's a required six-foot distance while students facing forward. This does pose challenge for our cafeterias. High school could look like six feet apart with seating for 85 students per lunch. At the Heathbrook, 60 students per lunch. And at the Ryan, showing 48 students per lunch. So, lunch and snack. Eating, as I said, requires a six-foot spacing. It requires the mask to come off, so the restriction is a greater distance. And all students would need to face forward in the same direction. So, when we looked at the all-in-person model, remember, three feet apart is the minimum in the class with six feet apart required to eat. So, snack not happening in the class. Many additional lunch blocks would need to be available to provide that six-foot separation for all students. An additional lunch monitoring, cleaning, kitchen personnel would be needed to address the extra lunch blocks. If we look at the hybrid model, and we'll get into that model a little bit later, it's half the students or cohort of students that make up about half the population overall. Snack at six feet apart could happen in the class. Extra lunch blocks would still need to be provided to accommodate student lunches at six feet apart. An additional cleaning and kitchen personnel as well be needed to address the extra lunch blocks.
And then, if we look at transportation, I can't say enough about Tooksbury Transit, our transportation vendor, and their ability to work with us along the lines in preparing for reopening. Andy over at Tooksbury Transit has just done an outstanding job working with us. If we look at regular bus transportation, what you are looking at is a substantial decrease in the capacity of a regular big yellow bus transporting daily. Students must maintain appropriate distance on the bus and be separated on the bus. This is the typical element that would be looked at on a bus. Students alternating on the inside and the outside, one per seat going down. Student, that total would bring you to about 23 students maximum on a big bus. We have some runs that hit in the 60s and 50s with students. So, this would require some thought about either adding additional runs, the same bus, doing it more than once, or adding buses. Tooksbury Transit has done some great thinking with us on this, and they have some terrific ideas. If we were to try to have all students return at one time, likely, we'd have to bring in supplemental transportation assets and additional vendor. We would probably max out Tooksbury Transit at that time. In a hybrid model, they would be able, they feel, to support transportation, particularly if we had an altered school day that would allow them a little bit more luxury about time getting students home. All students would be required to wear a mask on the bus, which is DESE guidance, which is also another reason why we wanted to make sure in the district, regardless of age group, students should be wearing masks at all times, no matter what. It wouldn't make sense to have a student on a bus with other students, and some have a mask because of their age group and others don't. And then, also, others taking it off when they get off the bus. So, out of consistency and trying to make sure it's the healthiest environment possible and in line with DESE guidance, masks would be required by all students on a bus, on a van, whatever transportation is being considered. Assigned seating would be considered at all grade levels. DESE guidance actually identifies assigned seating piece. Tooksbury Transit has actually looked at it a different view and asked us to consider a different piece where not so much an assigned seat, but the first person on the bus goes to the rear and sits to cut down on contact options as students pass on the seats and so forth. So, some things, good things to consider in practicality, how to impact that, whether it's assigned seats or a first one on gets this seat, whichever way. It's some good things to think about. We also have an asterisk with an M on there. You have a D, which means driver, and an M, which means monitor. One of the things we'll have to consider is, do we need to add monitors to school buses, add an additional cost to assist and ensure that students are masked and sitting in their assigned seats? That's one thing we'll absolutely have to consider. However, that obviously would come in an additional cost. Regular cleaning will occur. All of our transportation vendors have committed to post-run cleaning to ensure that once those vehicles are back to the shop, they have the materials and the assets to thoroughly clean them, whether it's a mister or a sprayer. And they have also committed to ensuring that in-between runs, there are wipe-downs of touched surfaces on the bus by drivers. And they will supply materials for drivers to do that, whether that's on a bus or a van. Some of our vendors for special education transportation are going to be charging us an additional cost for cleaning vans in-between runs. Tooksbury Transit has included that in the cost of their contract. Special education transportation on smaller vehicles will be run similarly. There'll be less students allowed with appropriate distance and seating on a van. You know, two to three students per van. If we look at our special needs population and medically fragile population, we may have students that, because of medical reasons, are unable to wear a mask. And we will have to support them both in school and in transportation. And we will have to support them both in school and in transportation. Likely in a special education transportation situation, that means one student on the vehicle. So, uh, there is some additional cost. There will be additional, um, runs and pickups, particularly with our outplace students that have to be considered by those companies and those will come at an additional cost. So we're, we're thinking of all those pieces. We think the, 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 from what we're collaborating with the vendors, that the transportation element will be safe, but it will be far less students on any given vehicle. We're looking at, uh, more runs, possibly more assets and likely additional cost, no matter which means of transportation pertaining to either or any of the three models. We can consider additional transportation costs, but the thinking around safety is, has certainly been done and we appreciate the work of our vendors.
Okay, um, you know, again, I think it's important in a minute, I'm going to show you personal preference. Before I do that, I just really want to thank all of our parents and our teachers and stakeholders, our aides for their input because you understand this has been a confusing process and not all, i- i- as, as things change and, and, and you're probably very sick of getting new guidance from us every, you know, Friday and Sunday and Monday. And, um, and as all that information is coming at you, you have participated in our surveys, parents. We've had over two thirds of our parents or two thirds of our students come before for our surveys. And we really appreciate your input. Thank you, Superintendent Maloney, myself and probably the school committee have talked personally to hundreds of parents with their questions. And we're happy to do that because this is confusing for all. So I just want to remind you, we have to include all three models. What you're going to see now is some of the detail around each of the models and then different stakeholders preferences as we have to include all the models in the plans. Okay, so the first thing that, um, is most notable is where are we in the data around reentry? Focus on parents and guardians as they answered for their kiddos. And then with our, uh, teachers who are most important as we try to reenter the 2022 school year. And then where we are with the models. So if we look at our current fall decision for our parents, right now 82, and this is our most recent survey, 82% of our parents, um, answered the survey saying they're leaning towards sending their child back with whatever in-person teaching learning we have available at our schools. 18% were leaning to not sending back. If we look at our, um, just across the slide at our teachers, we asked a similar question, but we asked, um, to, or if, if we have in-person, hybrid or all-in-person, could we be seeking a contractual leave or other leave back for the start of the school year? And we have roughly 75% of our teachers saying no, do not be seeking a leave. And then roughly 25% saying yes or other, meaning I'm not sure right now or other comments. Opening model preference, and now these are our, these are our parents who we asked, which of the reopening models do you prefer? See that roughly, uh, 30, 40% preferred all-in, 41 plus percent preferred hybrid. We have about 18% preferring remote. At our teachers and we asked which reopening preference, which model? So now, um, we have about 51% of our teachers preferring remote. 10 or 11% preferring all-in. And then about 38% preferring hybrid. So let's talk about each of the learning models a little bit. Again, we have to have all of them and with a preference on the all-in-person. What does that mean? It's a full school, school day in total length. All students and teachers are in-person or there will be some that require or choose remote. And safety precautions are implemented, like we talked about the mask, the distancing, the hygiene, et cetera. As regular a daily schedule as possible would be implemented, keeping in mind the restrictions that need to be accounted for, their arrival, dismissal, distancing, lunch, et cetera, would have an impact on that daily schedule. So what are the pros or the benefits, or call them what you will, all of our students and teachers would be in school unless medically unable. With their peers, so distance, parents can return to work every day. Access to school resources are available. In-person access to student support services, daily access to school breakfast and lunch. And certainly that social emotional benefit of getting out of the house and being with others. Certainly whether you call them a con, a comment or concern, um, facets of all-in that make all-in learning for everybody difficult. We know that there's an increased exposure to a whole cohort of students and I would say and adults, uh, not wearing all day. The students and everybody sustain that. It's transportation prohibitive with the restrictions on the transportation, um, for the buses. Multiple runs would be needed. Managing this new routine with all of these restrictions is very difficult. How would we manage that arrival and dismissal? We also expect many parents to be driving their kiddo. Six feet apart and lunch, all facing forward, not facing each other is a challenge. And as I said, that multiple lunches would need to be, uh, being stayed with and cleaning and disinfecting, increased hand washing routines. And then I think this is really important to note, teaching and learning will be different than what we're all used to. Our number one goal is getting our kiddos and our teachers back in the school. But I think we have to be realistic and realize that until we're back to normal, until we're back to March or December of last year, things are different. Um, let's talk about the hybrid model a little bit. This is the difficult model to wrap our heads around as there are, um, many, many moving pieces. But I just, as a reminder, you know, statistically, this was very attractive to our parents. I would say most attractive. And I know I'm saying that, um, most, um, uh, let's just say not the most attractive, but the most out of these opening models and definitely a similar statistical attraction to our teachers. They're not that far apart statistically. So if we look at the hybrid model, this is also a full school day in total length. All students are in-person, part-time and remote, part-time. Splitting our students into two cohorts, approximately half the class or half the school. And we know again, that, um, because of this in-person time, there will be some people and students requiring or choosing remote. Choice in a minute. Students would be distanced at least six feet apart because it's half the cohort. All teachers are in-person, in-class every day. And safety precautions are still implemented when in-person. And daily schedules will need to account for flexibility for the remote cohort and whole class support. So what we did is share something around some weekly schedules. And this, these graphics are very involved and I, I will just summarize this by showing, we had two weekly schedules to share with families. And that would be that your child, if in the A cohort or A group was in-person one week and then remote the, in week two. Or a different schedule where it's what we call the AABB schedule. A cohort would be in-person on Monday and Tuesday. The B cohort would be in-person on Thursday and Friday. And then on your, um, Monday, Tuesday, B cohort would be remote. Saturday, Friday, A cohort, cohort would be remote, but this, uh, week one and week two would be the same. What we also, uh, suggest in both of these schedules is a Wednesday remote for all students. Why? Because this gives an opportunity for enhanced cleaning, but in this, just in the midweek as well as on the weekend. Two schedule enhanced cleaning between both cohorts. It's an opportunity, keeping in mind our number one goal is to get these classes back to whole. An opportunity for A and B to be together in, with synchronous learning as much as possible as a whole class. What I'm going to show you is weekly sample two, which is the red, uh, piece of these pie charts was, um, most preferred with all stakeholders survey. Our teachers prefer the AABB schedule, our aides prefer the AAB schedule and our parents. If we look at, now we look at what each day looks like and that is very tedious and clearly see the graph alone is confusing. Scheduling a hybrid model is very complicated. As I said, there's many moving pieces and what we have to consider is what will our staffing availability look like? Keep in mind, when we talked about reentry and we have a potential of 25% of our staff not able to be with us. What would that look like? We know the hybrid schedule is disruptive for families and because some days it's some in-person. And we know that. What I, I need to say, and I'll say again, when we look at the pros and cons, is these are only sample ideas around a daily schedule. A daily schedule certainly need to be detailed out, uh, involving teachers and, and parents and students at each of those grade bands. Once we're, if we move to the private schedule as our reopening choice. So what I'd like to show you is, uh, the survey results that just closed yesterday, to both of those daily scheduled samples. If we look at our teachers, 61.5% preferred that majority in-person, which was four person, uh, four hours in-person content, travel home for breakfast or lunch with remote, time for either one-on-one support, uh, whole class support or B cohort support. Keeping in mind, B was on remote during the day, A was in-person, but how do we support the B cohort at some point in that day? If we look at the aides, similarly, the majority is looking at the majority hybrid day in-person. And then when we look at parents, we have a little bit of a shift here where they, uh, I don't want to say it's a, it's equal. We have majority looking at the whole in-person with the in-person cohort and a substantial amount also preferring the majority in-person. I know that there's a lot of, uh, future around the hybrid and I will tell you once again, hybrid model has many pros and cons and certainly a lot of detail work left to do. But let's talk about the pros and cons and the, um, comments that most parents have given to us. This provides students some in-person at school time, uh, during the school week. Some live in-person instruction is preserved. It's a lessened exposure to only half the student population. Opportunity for enhanced cleaning as we have provided and as our, um, our facilities people have provided can happen more often. And there is consideration that we have to put in there for the whole class to be together. Lessened contact tracing, students are six feet apart in rows, all facing forward. We still need feasibility, we can do that. Transportation is more feasible with half of our students. Snack can now occur in the room, six feet apart. Mask breaks can occur in the classroom now with six feet apart. And we maintain some social emotional benefits, getting those kiddos out of the house and to school with their peers. We know that there are many, uh, concerns and every effort will be made to keep siblings together in the same cohort, if you will, an A cohort or a B cohort. Childcare is a concern anytime we have any remote learning involved. Cohort days will be equitable. People have asked, what about holiday Mondays? What about that? We will balance the school calendar so that A cohort days and B cohort days are equitable. A big question and obviously a staffing availability concern for us is also if the teacher is with cohort A in-person, how are supports given to the cohort B and students at the same time? Scheduling details at each grade band, as I said, will need further input and development. Training, um, this is a comment that was made by many different stakeholders. This provides training time for remote instruction for the, for our students while they're in-person with the teacher, knowing that we have to train our students how to be a remote learner when they're not with us. Uh, six feet apart lunches will still need some additional, uh, personnel. And teaching and learning again will certainly be different than what we used to. Okay, so let's talk about the Remote Learning Academy, if you will, many districts are calling it that. This is when an individual choice is made. So a parent chooses remote learning, um, in lieu of either of the in-person models that we have available. So if the district's in either hybrid or all-in-person, parents have the option to choose a Remote Learning Academy as an alternative. That would be K through 12. It's a full school day for students in total length, but, and it's fully remote. Attendance will need to be taken and yes, in answer to many people's questions, there's still a Tucksbury Public School student. We're currently reviewing, in fact, we have some administrators who'll be popping off of this workshop because Desi is providing some learning management systems available to districts. We don't know what they are, they're being unveiled today. Most of the learning, I would say, is asynchronous, but we need to provide teacher contact with those students. According to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Commissioner, students in, who choose the Remote Learning Academy are likely ineligible to participate in other activities, uh, which would include MIAA sports and extracurricular school activities. The, the logic here that was discussed is if students are unable to be, uh, present with other students or other people, then they are, um, unlikely, uh, able to be present after school. Requests to come back in person, if, if a parent or a student chooses the Remote Learning Academy while we're providing the hybrid or all-in-person model will be reviewed with advanced notice. And, um, at the end, I'm sorry, my screen is, there we go. And at the end of each quarterly session. Okay, so now, um, what we're going to switch to, so that was, we talked about all-in-person and hybrid with in-person. And then if someone chooses remote, let's talk about the remote learning model, which would be the district, a district choice for all students. So if Tucksbury Public Schools is in full remote learning, RL for short, that would mean that all Tucksbury Public School students, K through 12, would be fully in remote learning for the full school day. Remote learning instruction would be enhanced and, and we've heard from every parent, I think, and every teacher, it would need to be enhanced from the prior spring remote learning, which, um, has been coined reactionary or crisis learning. We were, we were reacting to the situation as it was happening. We've learned a lot since then. Attendance will be taken, courses will be graded, they will, there will be expectations as parents have fully asked for. There will be synchronous and asynchronous learning, meaning synchronous at the same time. Teacher, students at the same time, asynchronous, not at the same time. Perhaps videotaped, perhaps, um, you know, where families might need the flexibility of supporting that lesson with their kiddo at five at night, but the teacher's obviously not there. So, uh, we need to think through those details as well on the new remote learning model. According to the Department of Education, again, the commissioner, if the district chooses remote learning, students are, all students in this case are likely ineligible to participate in these MIAA sports or extracurricular school activities. According to the commissioner as well, districts are also at risk to not receive the federal grant dollars, that are focused on bringing schools back. So those dollars are at risk as well. So what, what are the real pros and cons of a remote learning model? Obviously they're going to reflect a full school day. We want the, that learning to be enhanced from what it was before. We're working towards that. There's no exposure to virus threat from school. No masks are needed during the school day. There are less restrictions. This allows medically vulnerable students and staff to learn in a home or remote environment. What are some of the cons or comments and concerns we've heard from people? Uh, a concern about extended screen time, especially for our little students. There's no in-person learning with teacher and peers. Student engagement, uh, was low in our first go-around with remote learning. Parents are very, um, concerned that will happen again. Childcare is now a concern for all families who need childcare every day. Instruction needs to include both, whoops, I'm sorry about that, live synchronous and asynchronous. Instruction needs to include both, whoops, I'm sorry about that, live synchronous and asynchronous sessions. We know that not all students can access remote learning independently and will need extensive parent support and related services for our high need students is a challenge. Chris, thank you. I want to work with this slide.
Thank you to Rick Pelletier and the Special Education Office for doing some significant work on looking at our students with complex and significant needs. And please remember that we have to support these students across all three models. And we do have a bit of a head start in this in that we are currently, since Monday of this week, we have begun servicing some stu-, special education students in a special education summer program, a small amount, but we're certainly learning from that experience, how to best support students, how to use the PPE, how to look at appropriate distancing. So we, we are a little bit ahead on that. However, we will prioritize as a district in accordance with DESE guidance to make sure that we can maximize in-person services to students with complex or significant needs regardless of which model the school committee adapts. Clearly, in a all-in return, that would likely look very similar to what we're used to in school environment with appropriate safety precautions. If we were in a hybrid model, we would certainly look at maximizing the time when students are getting face-to-face instruction as far as services or other means. We also may look at our most vulnerable student populations and think in a hybrid model of additional face-to-face time with teachers beyond what the typical cohort of students may have, whether that might look like a DLC substantially separate classroom, maybe meeting every day, not just two out of four days. Looking at those options to increase the ability to service students in high needs. And in a remote learning environment, kind of where we're at right now as we speak, coming off a remote learning environment from the spring, we've been able to constitute some venue of in-person services to students. Some of that would be dependable, dependent on what the status of the state and the local community would be in, if there was some semblance of a stay-at-home order or something like that. It would also depend on staffing availability, staffing of special education programs. If it were separate from the model that the district was identified, would have to be negotiated with the union. So we look at the criteria established by DESE to determine who are the students with complex and significant needs. And we would prioritize those students. We'd use a lot of information, I think, in special education that would look at the primary disability and the level of need identified and determined. And certainly we'd want to service as many students as possible, particularly if we were not in an all-in-person. And we'd have to look at how we can do that with staffing and how we can maximize that. There's other students that fall under that as well. And those are English language students, students who are English language learners, students who are classified as homeless or in foster care. We would prioritize them as well. Students on 504 plans. And every, and as I said, every effort will be made for in-person services to provide based on the model and the selection and the staffing. So we're maximizing that thinking as much as possible. Once the model is selected by the school committee, we can certainly take a deeper dive into what exactly that may look like and begin to look at what particular, whether it's classrooms or individual services, we can maximize depending on the model that we're in. Accommodations typically can be implemented whether they're remotely, hybrid or all-in. So we'll be looking at all of those people, all of those students as well. In addition, I received a couple of specific questions from the CPAC. One of them had to do with who is enforcing mask usage, which is a great question. And the answer is everybody. Everybody is enforcing mask usage. Parents, staff. We're, we're certainly committed to making sure all students have a mask on at all times. We will be in an environment where there will be students and possible staff members who are unable to wear a mask. And we're going to have to support that within our community and utilize appropriate distancing and appropriate protocols. If we have a student that is refusing to wear a mask, then we'd make every effort to assist them, but at some point they maybe need to move to a remote learning environment if they're unable to, to wear a mask. So that's something that would be certainly a situation where you get parents involved and talk through and try to find out why that might be happening. We also had a question about what does the training look like for teachers, which is a great question. We have the additional 10 days that Ms. Regan will talk about in that when she looks at the calendar that were allowed by the commissioner up front. Our lead nurse, Kelly Constantino, has looked at multiple options for the training, but we will have an extensive safety training in risk training, safety for staff. And a big part of this will be working with staff so they can train students and see if we can train that up even before students arrive, what it's like to feel, what it's like to wear a mask all day. What does the classroom expect to look like? What are the expectations when transitioning? What are all those pieces? So we see that as a multi-tiered approach. Another question was, is rapid testing available in schools? Testing is certainly a question that was addressed by Governor Baker yesterday. He's specifically looking at options to support schools and testing. As of right now, Tewksbury Public Schools does not plan on running its own testing. That's not within the DESE guidance. However, there may be some state-level testing that, that might come out to support schools. There's other questions here on a one-on-one aides, will they be used? I think one of the things that we looked at in the remote learning element is we would certainly want to capitalize on using our own Tewksbury Public Schools aides and our contracted aides to the best ability possible to have a direct impact on students. What that would look like in each one of the models, it would look probably pretty similar to what we're used to in an all-in and a hybrid. We'd have to do a little bit more thinking on about how they could best be effectively used if we were in a remote only, but we're continuing to look at those pieces. So some great questions coming in from the CPAC and there's some great work currently underway in special education. So we hope to learn a, a great deal from some of the interaction we've had with students coming to school, being in the classroom environment and receiving instruction that's going on right now. So that's, that's some great aspects.
Okay. Now, we just talked about some special student populations. There are some special courses and my apologies for the typo. We'll fix that before we post this to our website, but there are some special courses that require additional safety. And this again is, all of these DESI guidance documents have been one, shared with you probably more than you want, but also are at the end of this presentation in our appendix portion. Those courses are art, the arts, visual arts, chorus, band, theater, dance and physical education. And the reason that they require additional safety are, are twofold. One, there's quite a bit of shared materials and, and equipment are required. They're categorized as higher risks, especially because of the virus transmission risk where there's increased respiration and singing or physically participating in a PE class and higher respiratory droplets. DESI recommends that these courses are held partially or fully online. At this time, we, as I said, when we looked at the hybrid model, whether in-person, all-in or hybrid, we have to consider how these courses play out in the daily schedule at each of the grade bands.
And just a reminder, I know Brenda hit some of it when she talked about some of the MIAA situations going within scholastic athletics. Again, we gave you the message that came directly from the commissioner. We haven't seen any final pieces in writing. However, the MIAA is scheduled to make a final determination in mid-September about how or if athletics will run. Clubs and extracurricular activities, we're, we're going to have to consider on depending on the model we develop and what's, you know, what safety considerations can be made. One of the elements we'll have to think about continuously, not just with our own sports and clubs, is how are our buildings being utilized? What other outside community events, rentals, other pieces of that nature are coming into our buildings? We're going to invest a great deal of time and a great deal of money cleaning these buildings. And our priority is to have them cleaned for staff and students to arrive each morning. So we may have to look at the overall usage of some of these buildings and how that impacts some of these elements going on. We've got some good plans in place, but if our schools are, are running actively, which some of them typically do into the nighttime, we may have to think about what that looks like out of a safety concern.
Chris, I think you, you touched on this a little bit. I don't know if you want to add to it, but this out-of-school time plan must be included in our Step Two comprehensive plan.
Right. And one of the elements that we know is certainly going to be a significant challenge for families is if there, we're in a, any form of a hybrid or a remote-only learning environment is childcare. And, and how families can go back to work and also know that their children are learning every day and are cared for. So it's certainly a concern of ours. We've done a lot of work with, with Alphabet, as you know, who's a licensed program through EEC. EEC has not delivered any of their fall expectations for after-school and before-school programming, but I can tell you that the expectations that they set forth regulatory on summer camps specific to Alphabet-type programs, which had to do with increasing the numbers of staff, ensuring that there was a cohort of students, the same students every day were together. And if students were, if parents needed to opt out for only a partial week or a couple of days, that option wasn't available under that guidance and under that regulatory piece of EEC. And what that looks like in the building and if we have students in part of the building as we're trying to clean and prepare that building for the following morning with extensive cleaning, we have to think about again, what are the activities that are taking place in there? Alphabet is motivated to operate and to run, particularly if we're back all in full. They're open to looking at what they might be able to provide in a hybrid environment, but the restrictions put on before and after-school programming specific to their licensure is far more extensive than anything that's coming out of DESE right now. So I think that is part of the element that we'll have to continue to look at. And once we looked at the summer programming and Alphabet calculated what the impact would be on payment of parents to cover the additional staffing, to cover the additional pieces as identified and the fact that there were no field trips, limited activities and that students would have to be in a same cohort rotation every day. They came to the realization that even in the best of situation, following those guidelines would not be a product that parents would be supportive of. So we'll have to look at what those restrictions will be in the fall and part of it will depend on the model at which this district looks at. In addition, we have the 21st Century Learning Grant over at Dewing. That was, that grant was actually very helpful in altering their aspects when we moved into a remote, into the summer programming, which is great. If we get that same level of regulatory relief when we open up in the fall, we hope that it matches where we're going with our opening model and hope to have those services available. But again, they were provided remotely to coincide with the fact that all districts were in remote. We're hoping that that grant will again comply with where the preponderance of districts are opening up. And again, I went over facility usage and, and all pieces of that. We've been very careful with our buildings all summer long. We've been very careful since the beginning and we're going to have to keep that vigilance if not only returning of students to school, but what level of activity we can expect our schools to have outside of the school day.
Okay, technology needs, whether in-person or learning remote, our curriculum requires technology today for both our students and our teachers. If we're an all-in-person model, in the all-in-person model, staff do and already have access to a desktop computer and/or a laptop at, at all levels of the, of the Tewksbury Public Schools. All students also have access to mobile devices when they're in person at school. But once we move to either a hybrid or a remote model, there's a remote portion, if not fully, partially in both of those models. So we know that our staff needs a webcam or a mobile device that has a webcam and I would say mic as well. All of our students will have an opportunity to borrow a Chromebook from the district to use from home during, whether it's a hybrid model or remote. Now, when we look back in the spring, the data showed, and we were pleased to see this, that device access and internet access was not a barrier to remote learning for our families. Less than 10% of our students either needed or opted into the district mobile device option. That option will be available again as we reopen the school year regardless of the model. So one of the major portions of our comprehensive reopening plan is health and safety, the response to COVID. I'm going to go a little backwards in the requirement to illustrate to you that the requirement E, that a school calendar with start, the start date, APD days prior to opening is recommended. Well, it's, it's required really, and our school committee will need to vote on the first day of school. Most parents may not have caught up with the most recent guidance from DESI, which said that school districts had 10 days for the districts to train up our staff and families to come back. So what I've shown you in the illustration is we originally, first day of school for our students was going to be right here, August 31st. But if we now layer on the 10 days, that brings us to the first day of school being September 16th. DESI has said no school, schools cannot open later than Wednesday, September 16th. And that these 10 days that we use for that training up our staff and families will count towards our required 180 days of school. So the 10 days, there's full school days for students will not need to be present at school. We have not yet identified how students and families will be involved in this piece, but the 10 days plus the 170 gets us to our 180. The whole school calendar and all of those adjustments, as I said, we really need to balance out if we have an A and B cohort, if we have all remote, whatever that is with holidays, what, where we will look at that whole school calendar and those adjustments will be voted on at the August 19th school. So what will the 10 days be used for? As I said, it's really a lot of training and a lot of practice and a lot of information, especially around the safety, wellness and social emotional supports that everyone will need, not only our students, but our staff. What the planning and instruction will look like? How are we training everybody to be in some portion or all portions of remote learning? How are we using those digital tools for instruction or assessment? And then certainly, how will we open the school year and plan for interventions that may be needed because of the gaps we had ending last school year but going into this year? And then how would we provide support and interventions if we should be in a partial, remote, the hybrid, a fully remote situation? So we will utilize those days to, as I said, train not only our staff, but inform and train and help our families reacclimate back to what learning and teaching is going to look like for their kiddos.
So we've looked at multiple scenarios within the DESE guidance about responding to school buses and community incidents related to COVID. Certainly, in a, I guess unfortunately, we've already had this specific experience in Tewksbury. In the spring of last year, when this first hit, we had a school trip returning from Italy. And we had to work directly with our town nurse and board of health with not only our state Massachusetts Department of Public Health, but also the federal CDC in walk-through these through these scenarios around how to specifically handle someone who is in a situation or looking at different aspects. So we've been down this road. This really is a coordinated effort between our lead nurse, Kelly Constantino, our town nurse in our Board of Health, because it is, these are complex pieces. We have brought in and have constructed, in some cases, alternative nursing spaces throughout the district to support not only students and their regular nursing needs, but a separate space for students who are either symptomatic or concerned about being identified during the school day as a potential direct contact or any element of that. We also need to prioritize self-screening, particularly by staff, by parents, and by students themselves before they come to school and come to work, to make sure if they're not feeling well, if they're symptomatic in any way, to stay home. And certainly, we're going to monitor state and local statistics regularly. Typically, I would foresee us not being out of contact with town nurse or the Board of Health for longer than a day or two on any aspect of what's happening. This is a complex piece, and I know it's a piece that has, you know, people concerned, but most of this is a medical decision, not a school policy element. And I think that's where we need to place a lot of the thinking. If you could go to the next slide, please? So within the DESE guidance, they have multiple scenarios set up. And what happens if something is, somebody is symptomatic? What happens if they test negative? If they pause? If they test positive? If they don't test? What are the quarantine, isolation aspects? What are all of those? We've looked extensively with these scenarios with Susan Sawyer and Irvy from the town. We might be making some adjustments to some of the DESE guidance specific to lengthening some pieces that DESE has decided what would be a proper isolation or quarantine time. We may look at lengthening that. But typically, if someone is, either reports or has been identified as symptomatic, this process begins right away. If you could move to the next slide, please? Again, we look at different aspects of how we're going to respond to these pieces. And what if a student or a staff member tests positive or is suspected positive? Who else may that affect? What is the cohort? And rather than saying right off the bat, some of this involves a little bit of investigation of determining who the staff member or the student has interacted with and when. Some of that investigation is required to isolate and to determine who may be a contact. We're prepared, certainly, if we have a cohort of students who are identified as direct contacts, certainly, we would be able to move quickly to contact parents and enact a isolation and quarantine situation with them at home, at which time they would take advantage of, depending on which learning model we're in, of remote learning at that time, and be able to wait out that piece. Their attendance would be covered if they're on that piece, if it's specific to being a contact, or if they're symptomatic, or if they test positive. The contact tracing is an element that we would work closely with the town. That is specific work they are very familiar with, and they're familiar with doing it in a school environment, because we've had to do it before. So a lot of that element is a combination of reach out between the town, medical staff, the school district medical staff, and administration to connect back with parents, to connect with staff members about what their current status is, how long they may be quarantined, when they can return, what they're going to do if they get tested, what's the result of that test. That is all done in partnership with the town. And certainly, if we had classrooms of people or other elements in the school, we'd message out. We have to be very careful about disclosing any specific information related to HIPAA. But certainly, if we had a rise in numbers or had a concern at a classroom level or something of that nature, that's something we would message out. At what point is it identified that a number of cases may result in a possible school closure or a possible district closure? That's something we'd consider in any situation based on safety. And certainly, if we have a concern of any way that there's a number of cases in a particular building, or a number of cases, once you start looking into siblings and other buildings or the nature of that, that's an active conversation in any scenario that comes up at that point. So part of that has to do with identifying what the facts you have in the situation, looking through the medical model with the assistance from the town and our lead nurse, and making a determination about who needs to be quarantined or isolated, for how long, who's a direct contact, how does that get communicated? And that piece, having, since we've been through it, that piece tends to move pretty quickly, if we're aware of the situation. Again, will there be testing in schools? We don't know. That's something the governor is looking at. That's not something, I think, as an individual district, we're looking at. Would we ask, you know, staff or students to get tested? If it can circumvent a quarantine or isolation time, I think that would be an option for them to look at. But there's elements in there that even if a test is taken and it comes out negative, that the quarantine would still hold for 14 days. So if we do have suspected or active cases, we can consider the fact that we'll be in an environment where we may have staff or students moving in and out of either a self-quarantine or isolation phase, or for students moving in and out of a more remote learning fashion from either a hybrid or an all-in-person, if that's the case. Again, it's somewhat fluid of a situation. Some of these scenarios are very clear, but we could run into scenarios we simply haven't thought of. So we need to have flexible thinking and make sure we're prioritizing coordination and collaboration with the town public health office. When we look at, you know, further cleaning and servicing of our schools, certainly, we have some older buildings. We've already looked at some of the HVAC systems and looked at their operational capacity and looked at their fresh intake value. As you can see, predominantly in our older buildings with the Univent systems, those systems operate and are designed to bring in fresh air. That's what they do at a fairly decent volume. So we'll make sure that all of those are operating at their efficiency level and are certainly in correlation with local and state codes, and we'll make sure that they are certainly bringing in the level of fresh air needed to support an environment where a virus or any illness of that nature isn't going to be exasperated because there's not enough fresh air coming in. I know there's been a couple of comments by parents and staff concerned about heat. Some of our buildings are hot. They're older, they're hot. And in many of those buildings, because it's hot outside, the fresh air that's bringing in is not cooling the room off. And that is not the design of it. It's not designed to cool it off, it's designed to bring in fresh air. So these systems aren't designed to cool classrooms off. We have a chiller system at the high school. We have some air conditioning rooftop units at the high school. We have some window air conditioners at some of our other schools. Those are designed for cooling. Fresh air intake is what the HVA system, fallback system in all of these buildings does, and we'll certainly make sure they're operating in the means by which they're supposed to operate. So we've already had a independent evaluation come in and look at those. We're waiting for some specific data on their write-up and report and look at a list of any filters or other aspects that need to be changed or serviced. We have a regular service on filters and operating mechanisms already as part of a contract, but we'll look at a more enhanced look at this and the operation value of each piece of equipment. And certainly, we're open to looking at any other elements that, you know, may help either circulating air or window opening or other elements of that nature. Certainly, we want to maximize that. When we get into heating season, we have, you know, you've basically got mid-September to mid-October is a season where you don't need heating and the air coming in can be somewhat refreshing. But after that, it gets cold out. And some of the guidance from DESE is to, at some point, sacrifice sometimes heat for continuing the circulation of outside air. So those are some of the things we'll look at to maximize airflow and air pieces, but we'll have some other supporting further data to look at with that as well. Some other elements that have gone into the cleaning plan that has been specifically looked at and sent out to the task force that we're looking for final edits to. We have cleaning broken up into two elements, routine cleaning, supplement cleaning, and enhanced cleaning. Routine of those things every day, the custodians are doing between sweeping, cleaning touch surfaces, moving through the building, continuous cleaning. Supplemental cleaning, what is those cleanings that staff members, teachers, secretaries, other members may have cleaning bottles or cleaning products available to them that may be doing their own touch surface cleaning or supplemental cleaning. The enhanced cleaning, I think we've got some specific pieces in there around electrostatic spray misting machine and a pressure washer misting machine, two pieces of equipment, actually multiple pieces of equipment that we purchased in the district to provide enhanced cleaning in a misting fashion to do, once students have left the building for the day, to enhance that cleaning and to make it easy for custodians to move through to disinfect. All of our cleaning products are listed in that cleaning plan and are CDC-approved. So we'll have all of those available sheets, and we'll also have emergency response cleaning. If we had an issue where we had a cohort or a section of students that we had a concern about and there was some level of isolation needed or quarantine, we could do some emergency response cleaning in that area right away. We have the availability of some vendors to bring in to addition with that. Over the spring, we brought in Nano Systems to support heavy cleaning within the district to provide a product that actually resurfaces all of our touch surfaces. And if we have to bring in supplemental cleaning companies or elements of that, we will certainly move on that if it's necessary. So those product sheets are available within that cleaning plan. And also, we've conducted specific inspections of plumbing and pest control by an outside independent evaluator. We've done repairs to plumbing and inserted that, or certified that the plumbing is safe. We've looked at all water sources to include bubblers. We will not be utilizing bubblers as a means by which for a student to bring their mouth to a bubble to get a drink. However, we will alter them to support filling water bottles so that we have enough potable water in schools, and we have an enhanced pest control management system available to us, particularly if we move to a heating outside of the cafeteria, whether it be in the classroom or in an alternative location.
Okay. And then, you know, it just warrants reminding again that we've given you a lot of information. And within that information are three different models for learning that can be pivoted to at any time in the year. All of the supporting documents and references that we've included in this presentation are located on the next two slides, which are the guidance documents from DESI, the CDC and other research documents we used, and then our stakeholder information, what the teachers association, as well as our surveys.
So that's a lot of information. And quite frankly, if you've listened to this presentation, you're pretty much up to date with where the task force has been with the amount of information that has flown through and some of the things that they've considered. Some of these topics may, you know, imply more questions than answers, and that's fine. But I think what we want to make sure is that we have our school committee in the best position possible with the most information and most input as possible, so that they can make the appropriate decision in the best interest of our students here in Tuxbury tomorrow. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I think we'll turn it over to you and see how you would want to proceed with questions.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent Malone. Can I go to Brian? I know we originally thought about going to our colleagues. We have our meeting tomorrow. We're also going to take public comment prior to the meeting, but if anyone is on the line, certainly we want to hear from residents first. So Brian, do you have anyone there?
Chairman, we have no one yet, but we had significant amount of people calling in, and there is a delay in the stream. So I would encourage residents, we only have one line, if it's busy, to keep calling. It just means somebody else wants to speak.
Great. This is what we're going to do, Brian. I'm going to move to the vice chairman. He can ask the first question, one question, and we'll check back with you from him, and we'll proceed accordingly. So I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Jamie Cutlass.
Oh, thank you, Keith. Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank Brenda and Chris and Rick Pelletier and Dave Libby and our whole staff. I mean, that was unbelievable amount of information and a tremendous job. And the town as well, Mr. Montori, Mrs. Sawyer, everyone else who participated. It's just unbelievably detailed presentation, I think, and I think they've covered every single possible base. I can't think of anything that they've overlooked. I mean, they may have, but I can't think of it. They seem to have gone over and above to look at every single aspect of this, and I just think they've done an outstanding job. That's my comment for now. I just had one question, if we know. What are the number of cases in Tuxbury right now? Do we know that? And what positivity rate is?
Chris?
Susan Sawyer, are you or are you available?
I am. Actually, I was wondering if Irvy might have those current numbers or not. See if she was on. Hold on one second.
I'm here. Hi. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So currently, we have six cases that are active. Overall, we've done really, really well as a community. And, you know, we're definitely going in the right direction. As I've said before, during our board of health meetings, we need to keep up the good work, we need to stay diligent, you know, reinforce the hand washing, mask wearing, we're doing everything right, let's keep it going, Tuxbury. And in terms of an actual number, I don't know it off the top of my head, but I want to say it's around the 2% mark, 2%, you know, alongside with the state. I haven't looked at that data in a little while, so that may be off, but if you would like, I can get back to you with a number at a later date. But I do know for sure that currently there are six active cases.
Does that include the state hospital, Blair House everywhere?
So the state hospital currently does not have any active cases for their long-term acute care patients. Blair House has no active cases. None of the congregate sites have active cases at this point. I think that the congregate sites have already gone through their cycle. And, you know, like I said, knock on wood, everybody's doing, we're doing pretty well right now.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any additional questions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. Brian, do we have anyone there?
We have several people here. Let me pull through. Okay, you're on the line.
Hello?
I believe we just lost that person. We have someone else.
Hello?
Whenever you're ready.
Hello?
Hello. Hi there.
Hi, this is Carla Branch at 30 Susan Drive.
Hi, Mrs. Branshaw. How are you?
I'm doing good. I'm doing good. So first, I want to thank everybody for all the hard work that they've been doing. I know there's no easy answers to any of this, so I'm glad I'm not in your shoes. But my question was, how would the hybrid schedule work at the high school if each student has an individualized schedule? So how would you develop a cohort A and cohort B?
Okay, Chris?
Ms. Reagan, you've done a little bit more work. I think you've talked about a high school, a little bit more specific to that. Do you have a?
I do. We can look at splitting the cohorts two ways. I think the most simplistic and probably the easiest way to balance the cohorts, because the high school is more complex than other than, you know, the self-contained class or the team, would be A-B-C order. So if we look at roughly like an A-through-L cohort for cohort A and an M-through-Z, and we would probably start with the high school to see does that, to the best ability, split our classes in half through the A-B-C order. And that, what we would then look at is clearly there are some families with a last name within the family, maybe don't fall perfectly in one or the other. So we'd have to work with that family to look at having the family on the same cohort. The other way we could look at is geographically. We could just split the even side and the odd side of the streets. We know that, you know, there is, there are issues with both ways. We would look at both. We would see which way equitably splits the groups in half the best. And as I said, high school would probably be the tail that wags that dog a little bit because of the many moving pieces at a high school.
That caller is no longer on the line. Just for anyone listening, we do have a very high volume of calls, and some of the calls are knocking other calls off the line. So if you could wait until the next call is finished before you call in, that would be very helpful. But we do have someone on the line right now.
Okay, Brian, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we just lost that caller. We're going to wait for the next one that's coming through. I apologize.
That's quite all right.
I was looking to talk to the committee of the school system.
Hello, you're here.
Hi, yeah, my name is Patty.
Patty, okay. I need your address for the record, please.
Oh, yeah, my name is Patty, and I have a child who's going to start the school. And I was just wondering, if the kids were tested, wouldn't that cost less money than having all the buses and all that stuff done, and then they could just do regular hygiene?
Okay, I'm going to yield the floor to Superintendent Malone to answer.
Yeah, I think what you're saying that is that if you just tested all the students and we deemed all the students safe, and we just started school, is that what you're thinking?
What I'm thinking is, wouldn't it be less expensive than worrying about the driving and all that? They could wear masks, and then you wouldn't have to worry about all those other expenses, even if the parents decided to help test.
Right. I think one of the problems, and I think I'm hearing you're right, is that our students and our staff, when they leave the building today, go back to their home environments, which may have varying degrees of connectivity of who they're connecting to. We have control over students in a cohort environment in school, can certainly support staff in their moving and what their level of interacting with other people may be at the school. But I think in that case, you don't have to talk to people every day.
Oh, yeah, my name is Patty. I'm just going to start. I'm so sorry. I'm hearing two different things going on. So I just said the same thing on the line that you just answered the question to.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm so sorry about that.
Thank you for calling in, Patty.
What I'm obviously asking is, wouldn't it be easier to have the kids tested? Have them just wash their hands? Go in and get everything done?
Yeah, I'm not sure what we're hearing in the, how this pandemic works, that that level of testing would be the sole rationale to keep students safe. We think it's multi-tiered. I think testing is certainly helpful, how long it takes a test to come back, what was the exposure of the student? If they test positive, were they with the cohort? All that contact tracing that goes into that piece, I'm not sure any of that would be eliminated within that process.
Chris, can I add a little bit something to that? This is Irvy, I'm the public health nurse. The other piece of it is that when you test somebody, you're just getting a snapshot of one moment in time. As we know, it's a two-week, it could be up to a two-week incubation period for somebody to develop illness. So just because, you know, you got tested yesterday and you tested negative, that does not guarantee that if you get tested today that you will still be negative, because there could have been an exposure at some point within the last two weeks. And so that's why testing everybody kind of universally, in some ways, it is good because you can catch those positives before they go out and they're, you know, in the school. But it's not 100% accurate because depending on your viral load and how your body is fighting the virus, like I said, you could test negative yesterday and test positive today. The benefit of testing everybody would be that you could immediately, you know, remove the positives from the general population to stop the spread, but it's not 100%.
Thank you, Irvy.
Hello?
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 I don't know if I'm on. My name is Greg Mar, still at the Heathbrook. My question to start is, where are the answers to all of the parents' questions that you had us send in that were purportedly going to be answered today? Because really, most of the information covered today is what was already sent out in those emails. And I think a lot of us would have the same questions, but there were no answers given to any of the submissions that came from parents.
Okay, Mr. Malone?
Yeah, I would significantly disagree with that statement. I think we've carried. Do you have a specific question that you feel was not answered in the presentation? We'd be more than happy to answer it for you.
Well, I mean, there's a number of them. First of all, is, you know, in the email, it was stated that the HVAC systems have been reviewed and approved, but today it was stated that they're waiting on reports. So which of those is true? And also, you know, regarding, I've seen inside the ventilation at the Heathbrook School, there are literally stalagmites growing in the ventilation. So how is pumping air through a system that has not been properly cleaned or maintained for the last, you know, five decades going to keep our kids safe from whatever's in there, never mind, you know, flesh viruses therefore around?
Could you restate your first part of that? I didn't understand your first part of that.
In the initial email, it was stated that the HVAC systems have all been inspected. And it was implied that they did well in that inspection. But today, it was stated that we're waiting on reports on the HVAC systems. So which of those, which of those is the case? Have they been approved and it's still pending results from that testing?
No, I don't think anything's changed. So I would certainly disagree with your assessment of that. We have had Honeywell Systems come in and inspect each element of it. Part of their tiered response to that is to do regular checks of filters and other elements. That has all been completed. That is fairly routine service for that. We've asked them to do initial inspections in the operation of the HVAC systems, and that's what we're waiting for reports on.
Okay, so the ventilation systems have all been thoroughly cleaned and all the mold and stalagmites and stalagmites that are growing in there are not present currently?
We have done environmental testing in our buildings fairly regularly since my arrival in four years ago, specifically for mold and other elements of that nature. And we have not had any positive tests in environmental testing for mold.
Has you looked inside the vents in the bathroom at the Heathbrook School?
I have not looked inside the vents in the bathroom at the Heathbrook School.
If you take a look in those, you know, you'll see very clearly and quickly what I'm referring to. And it's, it's appalling every time I look in. And it's more concerning under these circumstances because these systems are so important in this situation.
Certainly. And I think what we're looking at in the HVAC systems is their ability to produce fresh air from the outside and circulate that within the school, which is the primary connection to pandemic prevention.
But the systems themselves have not been properly cleaned internally in the vents. There has been no cleaning. So how can that be providing clean air as opposed to air that's pumping past God knows what?
Right. And we can certainly look into that for sure.
And just quickly, my other concern, and I'll hang up, is, is any hybrid or school model where there's no after-school care provided, it's very likely that grandparents or some other retired caregiver is going to be watching children. So how is the school preparing for the inevitability when a child brings home a virus that will infect and possibly kill their own grandparents?
Yeah, I think what we're certainly preparing for is the safety in the school buildings and what type of safety procedures if students are arriving to school are going to be utilized. We have a great deal of grandparents that serve as caregivers, regardless of a hybrid or any other element, already today, every day, and we have been. So that's certainly something.
Very much so. The country has had large reinfection rates. So the odds of a child becoming a carrier are going to go through the roof. I know I said that was my last time, but additionally, I think that the division between teachers and parents needs to be more clearly supported by the school committee and the administration, because teachers are being told that they need to get their affairs in order and that they...
I believe we lost that caller, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, do you have someone else on the line, Brian?
Oh, here is someone, I believe.
Great.
You're on.
Hello?
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 Yeah, I love to talk with the group.
Good afternoon. Could I please get your name and your address for the record, sir?
Jim Wentworth, 128 Pike Street in Tewksbury.
Good afternoon, Mr. Wentworth and Malone.
How you doing?
Good, thank you. You have a question?
Yeah, am I on?
Yes, you are. You're on.
Yeah, so I saw the presentation today, and the, you know, when we looked at the survey, it was as though most of the parents are...
I believe we lost that caller as well. I would encourage anybody listening to not call in if you hear someone else calling. We only have one line, and people are being bumped off due to the very high volume of calls. Just give me one second, Mr. Chairman.
Hello? Good, thank you. This is Kandakichow from 1535 Main Street, Unit 105. I have two students in Duane and North Street.
Okay, welcome.
So, thank you. So first of all, thanks to everyone and to the team for all of the details you have provided and the work you've been doing on throughout the summer and then before. My question is specifically about the challenges that certain of our kids would have to keep the mask on for eight hours or four hours, whichever route we went with, and how to manage that situation, whether it is for sensory and sensory issues that the kids may have or for other issues. What's the process that the teachers and then administration to take to enforce or coach the students to keep their masks on and whether they cannot comply?
I'll yield that to Superintendent Malone.
Thank you, Chairman. I think some of that we did go over in the presentation in regards to masking, and MASC has actually put out a model policy in regards to masking for students. I think the first part of that question, though, had to do with students in sensory and the kind of that difficulty, particularly for younger students, keeping the mask on for an extended period of time is new. It's going to be different. And I think part of that will be as we ramp up to the start of school, depending on the model that we're in, is one, strongly encouraging parents to get their children used to wearing masks at home for extended periods of time. Work with them. Also, look at instructional models that teachers can use prior to school arrival and when students arrive about how to keep their mask on, how to respond to simple things like not touching the mask or adjusting the mask. It's going to certainly be a management challenge for everybody, and I think students certainly will have a level of learning curve, but we do think it's a routine. We specialize in teaching routines to students. I think it's a routine that we can certainly, with a lot of care, a lot of continuing expertise of our teachers, working with the students on that, parent support, it's going to be something that we'll all have to work together. As far as a student who has a sensory issue or difficulty with the mask or may have a medical reason, that falls into a little different category. We likely will have students that will have a medical reason why they can't wear a mask. And we're going to have to support the fact that that student is in school. They may be six feet away from everyone, but we'll have to support that piece. Students who are having difficulty, can we give them extra support? Can we bring the parents in to talk a little bit more about how to keep it on? Are they having more difficulty with it? And also, you know, if it's not working, parents will have the option of a remote option for students to take part in. So it's going to be a change. It's going to be a cultural shift. But wearing the mask is an essential part of ensuring safety in the school. So it's something we're certainly going to be dedicated to making sure works.
Thank you, Mr. Malone.
We have a new caller on the line. It's whenever you're ready.
Great, we're ready.
Hello, this is Chris Conroy, 30 Star Avenue. How are you?
Good, thank you. Thank you for calling.
Well, my question is, in one of the slides, you noted that DESI indicated there would be no extracurricular school activities if the district were to go with a remote learning model. And my question is, could you elaborate on what the definition of extracurricular school activities would be? And specifically, would youth athletics?
I think he cut off, Mr. Chairman, but I think he was trying to relate interscholastic athletics as extracurricular activity. And that comment was...
Sorry, Sue, can I just, I think what he's looking for is, is it just sports? And if I heard him correctly, I think he's looking for us to define what extracurricular... And, um, if I heard him correctly, I think he's looking for us to define what extracurricular addition to sports, um, does that include some?
So the commissioner's comment was specific to athletics and extracurriculars, there's kind of two levels of extracurriculars. We have extracurriculars that interact with other districts or fall under a charter at a state level and other aspects of, of like that, that are competitive clubs or other things like that, that would typically fall under the governor's, uh, order. We also have local clubs in, in elements and those we'd have to look at individually. Certainly if it's, um, if it's not safe enough to come to school, we'd have to consider whether it's safe enough to do in-person, uh, type clubs or activities. If we're looking at people who have individually chosen to do remote learning, I think what we'd have to reflect back on is what is our cohort situation as far as exposure and who's in the building and who's out of the building and what does that cohort model look like? I think we're, we're open to anything internally, but I think safety is going to be our, our priority. I don't say that the commissioner's piece, I think, is a little bit more out of consistency. I think our piece would be if we're looking at individual clubs or activities or things of that would be out of safety. So I, 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 I think that's, that's a big piece we'd have to look at individually, what are those clubs or activities and can they be run safely? And is this a question of the entire district is in remote and we're trying to run it? Or is it a club or activity that's running that has individual students that are in remote learning and want to participate? And that would involve an, an individual answer.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
And I wanted to just also clarify one more thing, if for example, the entire district is in remote, um, there's a reason that we've decided that, or, you know, the, the state has decided that in-person is not, um, safe at this time or at a time. And I think at that point, we would need to look at are there any clubs or activities that could run remotely and, and safe? So there's so many facets to this, um, but, you know, I think again, just as I stated with the commissioner, using the logic model, if it's not safe for someone to be in person with others throughout the day, we have to be thinking, is that safe at any other time in the day? Um, and he used the example of if it's unsafe for a person to be with other people during the school day, is it okay to be bumping up against another athlete in the afternoon? So, um, I think there's a, there's a lot of unknown, but what, what we said is not no, we said, uh, likely ineligible, likely not able because of the logic model that was presented to us.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Reagan. Brian, do we have another caller?
We do, and I'd just like to remind the public, um, one more time, Mr. Chairman, just please do not call, um, multiple times in a row because other people are getting bumped off. We, we have a significant volume of calls, uh, but we do have a caller right now.
Okay.
Is that going to be me?
Hello, that's you, you're on.
Hi, um, this is Pamela Fabe, I live at 1034 Chandler Street in Tewksbury. I wanted to thank you all very much for all the effort you obviously put into the safety of our, our kids.
Brian, can, can I ask a, a procedural thing? If I'm on the other end and I'm trying to call in, it seems to me from where I'm sitting, someone starts talking and the phone's beeping, so someone's calling in, they get in about 10 seconds and they're cutting out. So if a resident is calling in, are they getting a busy sign? Is it just ringing off the hook? Should we tell residents to give it one, two, or three rings and then hang up, wait a minute, and then try again? Um, it, it just seems to me we can't, as soon as we get someone on, they start talking and I'm hearing, you know, like we hear when someone calls in on your cell phone from another line, one, two, and by the third or fourth beep, that, that caller is gone, so...
Yes, that's correct. The, the biggest issue is we're having, um, a single person call in probably about three times within a minute and, and that knocks the other person off. So, so I just request anybody listening where if you hear a person speaking, please wait until that person's done and then make your call.
Okay.
But we have a caller right now.
Great, thank you.
Yep, and there's someone on the line right now.
Great. Hello?
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Miller.
Hello, Elizabeth, I can't hear you at all?
Sorry, go ahead, Elizabeth.
Um, I was wondering how social distancing would work with active shooter and fire drills?
Yep, Mr. Malone.
Thank you very much. So, uh, drilling would, would, would certainly likely look the same. We may have to, uh, for drilling's sake, may have to consider some distancing and evacuation of, or how students are spread out if we were in a lockdown or something of that nature. However, what would be part of that practice as well is if we were in an actual fire event or an actual security event, we would ensure in that drilling to make sure students are following that safety protocol as designed in that, I mean, for drilling's sakes, we can certainly utilize it and do it with partially or showing distancing and so forth. And don't forget, most of our trainings are also available virtually for students to view and show in class. Uh, what we would certainly want to differentiate between, uh, an active shooter drill is to make sure students understand that if this wasn't a drill, you would certainly move and do what you're supposed to do regardless of social distancing issues.
Uh, we have another caller, Mr. Chairman?
Right, thank you.
Hi.
Hello?
Um, this is Bailey Mahoney, um, I'm at 61 Sesame Street in Tewksbury, and I'm also a high school teacher here in town.
Okay.
Um, I have two questions.
Right.
Um, my first question has to deal with the lack of subs, um, we have in the district as well as that 25% of teachers who, um, are nervous about or leaning towards not returning to school. Um, so if we have teachers of one cohort who are all being quarantined because someone in their cohort tests positive, um, how are we planning on covering those classrooms? Are teachers who are quarantined going to be required to keep teaching or if they're sick are they going to be required to keep teaching? And if those of us in the building are asked to cover classes of teachers who are on quarantine, um, how are we going to make sure that those teachers are still safe? Because the idea of the cohort model is we all are kind of self-contained, but if we have to start covering other teachers' classes, that kind of breaks down this whole cohort model we're trying to implement.
Hey, Mr. Malone?
Right, so certainly the, the 25% of, uh, staff that, and I, I think what we've identified is that they anticipate, uh, possibly looking at a leave. If a teacher is on a medical leave, which would be any of the leaves listed in the teacher's contract or as part of the two additional COVID federal leaves that are involved, those are leaves, those people aren't at work and they would have to be replaced by a substitute teacher. Whether that leave is long-term or short-term depends on the availability. We do have the availability to hire long-term subs, it's the short-term subs that would be the concern, so it would depend on the leave that's, that's being identified. But taking a leave is a formal process. As far as any type of cohort coverage or if someone's under, uh, quarantine or someone comes on that piece, that's certainly something we would want to rely on our leadership team and the staff to work together to support where, how we're going to cover students, whether we can use partially remote options or other elements like that, that would certainly be a piece. Staffing is an issue no matter which model you talk about across the board. Uh, staffing is, is going to be an issue, particularly if 25% of the staff, don't forget, if a staff takes a leave, they're not available to work. Even if we were in remote learning and they take a leave, they're on leave. Other options we could look at with somebody who's anticipating a leave and, and have them work in a remote, remote environment as opposed to taking a leave? I think we're open to those conversations, but those would probably be very individual situations.
Okay, thank you. And my second question, um, has to do with the, um, news that's coming out recently about, um, students aged 10 to 19, um, showing that they can easily transmit and get COVID just as easily as adults do. Um, we just had a party, a Chelmsford graduation party that caused a spike near our town. Um, what are some of the steps that we are taking to, uh, we talked a lot about students and student safety, what are some of the extra steps we might take to help protect our at-risk teachers or our teachers in general?
What, what kind of things are you thinking about? Additional PPE or for teachers, give me an idea of what you're thinking about?
Um, yes, additional PPE or extra space between students and, um, staff, um, you know, duties that we're required to cover. I personally don't feel safe walking around the cafeteria doing lunch duty when all the students have their masks off.
Right, but I, I think, uh, what is key in those elements would be the distancing protocols being enforced. Certainly we have purchased PPE in, in accordance with D E, D E S E guidance, we have it available for staff and that can go from masks to gloves to gowns to all those pieces. I think specifically on other elements as far as movement in the building, um, I would be a little bit more focused on what's the distancing between people to make sure that's following within the guidelines set by D E S E and our medical personnel, um, as, as a priority. I'm not sure if that answers your question.
It, yeah, for the most part it does. I'm sure there'll still be more, but thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Brian?
Hi.
Hello?
Hi, this is...
Good afternoon.
This is Beth on Ballard Street.
Yeah.
My question for the committee is on adjustment counselors and school psychologists. When the, um, inevitable happens and someone gets sick in the community, have we prepared for additional adjustment counselors to be provided, especially the younger grades who can't quite process the trauma of, um, COVID cases within our community?
Mr. Malone?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're certainly, uh, very conscious of social emotional supports that goes across school psychologists, school adjustment counselors, and certainly we're fairly well-equipped as a district to support that. As far as bringing others in, certainly we could look at agencies for help if we feel we're in a crisis situation. We certainly work with other districts if there's crisis situations in schools to mutually support each other. Um, I, I, I'm not sure if you're suggesting just simply hiring additional people, uh, we'd have to allocate that for, in the, in a potential situation. We'd certainly have to allocate that for in the budget and, and look at our existing staffing and see where, uh, alterations could be made to support that. But we do have certainly, uh, the ability to move counselors around within the districts and school psychologists to support any type of crisis situation. We have fellow districts we can work with to support that if you're talking about a crisis. If you're talking about a preventive situation, I think with, we have clinical support in every one of our schools. So I think we're fairly well-equipped for that and they can mutually support each other if there's an extensive need at one school or another for a particular incident.
Um, I have another question if I might, um, also regarding mental health, um, concern for the mental health of our teachers who may be, uh, dealing with remote learning and in-person learning at the same time and preventing burnout among educators, um, because of the, the added responsibility and pressure of teaching during a pandemic.
Yeah, I, I certainly think I wouldn't, I mean, I think we're all suffering from, uh, pandemic overload and I, I think certainly in working with the teachers' union, I don't think there's been any situation where we've talked about increased workload or, or anything of that nature. Uh, but I think the stress of just operating in this environment and, and there's, and we've heard from some teachers, the stress of not being at work. Uh, there's the stress of going to work and the stress of not being at work. We're, we're all in the midst of it, living it, and I think we could all use some certainly clinical support and mental health support and certainly understanding of the environment that, that we're in. So I'm, I'm not sure there's a specific, uh, workload, uh, increase to apply to that, but certainly it's different and it's under different circumstances and, and we certainly understand that and want to be there to support teachers. Absolutely.
Have, have you come up with a plan on supporting the teachers?
Would, did you have a specific suggestion of support for teachers?
Um, the, the decrease, the, there's an increase in professional development at the beginning of the year, but instituting a new professional development, um, time beyond trying to work on our current curriculum would be difficult for teachers, allowing us the time to, um, work together on curriculum, um, and that sort of thing, rather than a new professional development initiative would be one of my suggestions.
Yeah, and, and no, it's a great suggestion and, and most of the 10 days that have been provided by the commissioner are actually specific to COVID response and preparation for the model in which the school adapts, safety procedures, social emotional learning for students. We could certainly add some PD on social emotional supports for teachers, uh, racism, uh, other pieces like that. So I, I'm not, I wouldn't consider some of those, you know, maybe new mandates or anything like that, but, uh, that's additional time to support, I think, exactly what you're talking about, which is putting teachers in the best position possible that when students arrive, um, they have the knowledge base, the safety acumen, and they feel supported and that they can do their job.
Chris, if I may, this is Brenda. Um, just in, in, um, answer to that question, we have an amazing team of school support personnel who have been working with our Director of Student and Family Supports, not just recently in reaction to coming back, but all summer and even in the spring. In fact, they've attended several different workshops all while we've been in remote learning and while they've been on summer break, preparing, uh, not only guides for teachers to use with students, but how to take care of themselves. You know, COVID or not, here we come was the topic of one of the workshops that people went to, how do we come back? Um, and how do we, some people thrived in the remote learning and some suffered significant trauma. So we know that we have to address all the, of our school district to come back and, and reestablish what teaching and learning feels like, um, in the next school year and, uh, as we start the year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Reagan. Brian, do you have another caller there?
Hi.
Hello?
Hello, hey, can I get through?
Yes, you can. Who am I?
This is Crystal Salma, I'm at 141 Carter Street.
What is your question, comment, or concern?
Oh, am I actually on?
Yes, you're on. Welcome.
Oh, okay, sorry, the delay on the TV, I was listening on the TV. Um, so I have two things. The first is, um, I'm going to turn off my TV because that's distracting. Um, so the first is more of a thought or suggestion around the survey because it was mentioned on a couple of the, the social media boards and the original survey to parents was a little, um, unclear, I think, in the wording. The way it, it came across to me, and I know a number of other people who answered it, was if the district decides to go back in person, will you send your child or will you opt out? Not necessarily is your preference in person. So I don't know if it's feasible, but possibly after today's information session with so much more information, one more touch base with the parents might get a better reflection of, um, exactly what the parent's preferences is on the model, not necessarily will you comply with whatever we decide. Um, the second part is more of a question and it, it's less about what are the protocols and the, um, the safety measures and the masks and everything, more about like what the kid's day will look like. So particularly I have an entering kindergartner coming into the doing and I guess from a social, emotional level, I'm just thinking about, you know, how will the kids be interacting? Will they be having art class? You know, what are the, I, I'm sure the teachers are thinking about this endlessly, about how they, they keep that class fun and engaging for children. Um, I'm just interested to hear some of the ideas from the teachers on what that day looks like and how they're still supporting the kids emotionally and, and from a fun and activity standpoint with all of these restrictions in place.
Great, great questions. I'll turn it over to Mr. Malone.
I know the caller kind of, I think, asked a question towards teachers, so I'm not sure, but I don't know, Ms. Reagan, do you want to?
Yeah, and it's, I, I received an email from another parent too that asked, um, that we, you know, just talk a little bit about the structure of the day. I think first and foremost, again, I want to just go back to, um, all of our entire school community needs to, um, we have to figure out what does it feel like to come back? How am I a learner in this environment? And how, you're right, how do we de-stress a little? We are dealing with that in our everyday lives. How do we stay distance but enjoy each other's company and, and however we can do that? So we have to... I think first and foremost, again, I want to just go back to all of our entire school community needs to, we have to figure out what does it feel like to come back? How am I a learner in this environment? And how, you're right, how do we de-stress a little? We are dealing with that in our everyday lives. How do we stay distance but enjoy each other's company and, and however we can do that? So we have to, we have to establish that. Obviously, students are really good at learning routines from their teachers, better than they are, in fact, when they're, when they're at home. So we have to establish those routines. We definitely have to make people feel comfortable and at ease with learning with a mask and that, this is not going to be an easy task, I can guarantee that. But what I know about students and, and our teachers are, we adapt and we, we definitely make it feel right for students. That's number one. Secondly, what does the day look like? There has to be opportunity to socialize, distanced but socialized. There has to be opportunity. Another parent asked, will we prioritize the time that we're in person on core content so students can get the core content directly from the teacher, but then prioritize some of those higher risk specialists at the end of the day? Right now, we haven't made those exact determinations because again, it has to be looked at at each grade band, what logically feels right in a schedule. We know high school is definitely a higher stakes environment and for some students, it is, it's those very classes that is their future. So we don't want to minimize how important those classes are to all students. So I think that's still the work we have to do, but coming back, using those 10 days, we'll really focus on what does school feel like in person now and how do we make it feel like the comfortable school community we once knew with all these different restrictions? Their reality, no matter where we go, whether we go to the store or anywhere we go, these are the realities we're living with and we need to do that appropriately for our students.
And her initial question also was regarding the, the original survey, which was kind of the baseline, and then when we circled back, could you briefly answer that, please?
Yes. So, you know, we, we, our task, and if anybody has had the opportunity to read the initial fall school reopening guidance, is to survey our parents and it was, we were tasked to do that once. We've, we've chosen to do that now four times. We will ask another survey because as we get closer to starting the year with this runway that's getting shorter and shorter, we will need parents to let us know at some point what is their plan, not what is their preference, but what is their plan? Because we do, while we'll plan for every one of our students to have a seat at our schools, we need to appropriately, if we go into any kind of a cohorting model, balance those classes appropriately and obviously look at some of our higher need students and how we, where we're putting them and which cohort. So yes, we'll survey parents again. We've asked the question multiple ways to, because what, what asked one way to one group of people didn't make sense and we, we have different people looking at it. We will, the last survey asked leaning towards moving forward. It will be what is your plan? And we, we will have to get to that place around classroom, transportation and so forth, so we can plan as we get closer to the September 16 mark. We may survey one more time, but your parents can guarantee at least one more.
Thank you, Mrs. Reagan. Okay, Brian, do we have someone else?
I believe so. Caller?
Hi, yes. My name is Leah McDermott. I live at 105 O. Cress Circle. I'm actually going into junior year at TMHS and I'm, I do just have a few questions. I just want you to know, I want to see, you know, so like give like just like a student perspective.
Sure, sure. Absolutely.
So one of my concerns, first off, is the curricular activities. In a hybrid model, possibly, how would those work? Like if you're saying like if we go in the morning that day and per se like somehow our activities are still going on, I don't know the plan with that. But if they are going on, like would we be able to come back in the afternoon after school to attend those?
It's certainly something we would consider. I mean, I think the, the cohort model is specific to having half the amount of students in the class and other things like that. If, we also have to look at the total number of people in the activity and what kind of cohort does that itself stand? If that's a small number of students, is it a large number of students? What space are they going to be utilizing? There's been a lot of, some DESE talk about doing things outside. I mean, I, I get a little bit concerned as superintendent of moving classes outside where we've spent an extensive amount of time in the past few years ensuring our schools are safe and ensuring that our schools, if we talk about act or shooter drills, about all kinds of things like that, I get worried about that as a long-term solution or as a way to oversee that. So some of that's going to have to get right down to the level of what is the activity? How many students are involved? Where is it happening? I don't think the aspect of someone being on a, let's just say off the top of our head, a Monday, Tuesday cohort and the club is on a Thursday, I don't think that in of itself is prohibitive of that student attending.
So like they can still attend on the Thursday?
We'd have to look at what the activity is, how many students are involved, does it establish a new cohort? Where is it taking place? What is the distancing? What is the PPE? What are we doing to make sure that that, that is safe? There's a whole level of question that would go into that.
Yeah, no, so like a lot of us too, the, the another concern with hybrid is that, especially in high school, like a lot of us, you know, I know, like I have a lot of friends, we were actually had a huge conversation about this yesterday, who, you know, like a lot of the big part of school is getting able to see all their friends and a lot of them are like, well, I want to make, like I, a lot of them are like, you know, especially like, and the problem, this isn't me too, like this is other high school students too, who like, they don't want, they're not going to be motivated to go home and then get online and do more classes, like they already have homework and stuff like that, but that's not me, but like that's just like general reaction I've heard from like other peers, from my peers, and I feel like that's another concern too that should be brought up is like how motivated are these kids going to be to go home and do more online classes?
Right, it's a, it's a, it's a legit concern and I think if, if, if you're still talking about a hybrid model, I think that we certainly want to maximize that in-person time to support students to be in the best position possible when they're doing the other remote portion to make sure they're keeping up, getting it done. It's hard. It's hard being online. We're not, you know, we all got in this profession to interact with students and kids and that's not, you know, that's not innate in remote learning. We have to do what's right, we have to do what's safe. And I think there's a lot of things we can do to enhance the remote learning, but some of the social aspects just, just can't be replaced. So I think what we'd look from, from students is what are ways we can help? What are ways students can work with other students to try to keep that motivation going? No matter what's leading-
Well, I think that's the other thing too, some kids are like, but I'm going to go to school and my best friend's in another cohort and they're like, you know, kind of like, you know, I don't get to see them, you know, and I know that's going to be a problem too with some kids and like it's going to be hard.
Absolutely.
Yeah, this is Brenda Reagan again. That is why, you know, the thinkers so far, not just in Tewksbury, but, you know, statewide and especially in the Merrimack Valley, we're considering, is there, we always have to have our eye on that prize, the whole class is back together and we're all in. So how do we establish a whole class relationship at some point during that week, no matter what, hybrid model, weekly, daily or remote? How do we get that whole class together as often as possible? And that's why you saw that sort of the blend of the blue and red day, you know, I just picked purple to show that that's the whole group because they do need to get to know each other and it's our school, it's our little ones who, you know, what if we're at some point through the year, putting them all back together and they've not met? The teacher needs to meet them as a class, they need to meet each other as a class. So I agree with you wholeheartedly and that was so important in doing that.
Because you know, especially in January, it's like there's a vaccine and stuff like that and we can finally go back to fully in-person.
All right, thank you for calling. Thank you, Mrs. Reagan. Brian, do we have another caller there? And can I, can we go to the next caller that I'm willing to sit here and, and listen to concerns as long as it's going to take and questions and whatnot? Please, please, if you can't get through and you have a question that's pertinent to the information that you got today, please, please send that question along to Mrs. Reagan or to Superintendent alone. The last thing I want from today, I know, you know, we're stuck with the format that we are, it's unfortunate, but the last thing that we want is someone to have a question and for them to be able to give an answer. So, thank you. Brian?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have someone on the line.
Great, thank you.
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, my name is Colleen. I live on Patton Road.
Good afternoon.
How are you doing today?
Good, thank you.
Again, thank you to all. This is a big decision to be making for everybody in the community. My questions relate to if we open full-time, not only is it going to be a sticky situation with the challenges of having all of the kids in the rooms at the same time, it's also the budget and the cleaning and the transportation. We are coming upon flu season also. How is that going to impact going back to school? How do you know your child is just actually having the flu and not COVID?
Great question, Mr. Malone?
Yeah, just on the first part, on the, on the budget piece, I don't think there's one model here that isn't going to have an impact on our budget. Certainly, we've, we've gotten some grant money and we'll continue to look at that as far as purchasing a PPE and so forth, but there's no transportation element that isn't going to cost us more money. Even if we're in a remote learning environment and we try to support our most needy kids, they may need to be transported into schools for services. So transportation's going to be a, a key piece. As far as all students coming in and the reflection on the budget, again, across all three models, it's going to have an impact on the budget. As far as going into cold and flu season and knowing the difference between that, you're right, the system, the symptoms look fairly similar and we're going to have to be vigilant about that. I don't know if Susan or Irving or Kelly have any advice on that, but certainly that's going to be a concern that symptomatically the flu may look a lot like the, the indicators of, of COVID and we would expect people that if they are symptomatic of that nature and it hasn't been determined whether it's the flu or something else, that they follow the safety protocols and stay home. Susan or Irving, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that?
Yeah, I would definitely agree with that. Chris, you know, if you're not feeling well, the takeaway message here is that you should be home. If you're, if you're concerned, you know, contact your provider, whether it's, you know, a pediatrician or your primary care provider and, you know, talk to them and, and see what they think the next step for you should be. Kelly, do you have anything to add?
My other question is that we're, we are as a community have been pretty much diligent in closing restaurants, leaving them closed until just recently. There hasn't been a lot of activity of others coming into the community from other towns or whatnot. Now, if we go back to school, we have parents that will be going back to school, they'll be around other people and then going back to where their children are and then their children will be going back in. I know this is a fluid-
Kelly or Irving or Susan Sawyer, can somebody share just the, the messages that have been out publicly around flu and flu vaccinations?
Yep, I can, I can take that. You know, more, more important than any other year this year is to get your flu vaccination. That's definitely going to be, I think, a big public health campaign in the upcoming months. Again, you know, as I, as I said, it is, it is really hard to distinguish between what could be the flu and what could be, you know, COVID-19. So again, I would advise you to, you know, turn to your primary care provider and, and use their expertise, you know, in their guidance to, to give you a diagnosis. And in terms of, you know, people moving about between different communities, I mean, unfortunately, we all, we all do have to get back to work. We're going to have to just take it in steps, you know, see where our numbers, what our numbers look like in the upcoming months and, you know, work together with the school department, with the health department and with the town manager's office to figure out, you know, what is the safest way to keep kids in school? Or, you know, or whether it's a hybrid option or a remote option, we have to do, you know, we have to look at the numbers, see where we are as a town and then kind of figure out a plan. Unfortunately, there's not, there's going to be circumstances that come up that are, you know, going to be very unique and we don't have all the answers currently, unfortunately.
Hi, this is Susan Sawyer. That is true. Thank you, Irving. And I want to say the governor has committed to working with the schools in a, an effort to get vaccinations for, flu vaccinations for the children. So I think that you're going to see some of that coming out soon. And since you were talking about communities that are nearby us, I just want to let you know that the Merrimack Valley, even though we have been the hotspot in the past, I have to tell you that our contiguous communities are all under 1% positivity right now and we do communicate quite a bit, all the nurses and the public health directors, and we will continue to do so so that we can identify those hotspots. But we have great concern as anybody else with this unknown fall coming up upon us. Thank you.
This is Kelly Constantino and I just would like to add that it's going to be so important and I just have to stress that we're really, really going to be relying on parents and staff and students just to be completely upfront and honest with us and letting us know if they're not feeling 100%, we will have that other option, you know, if we are in the building, there will be that other option where they can log in remotely and, you know, it's not going to affect their attendance or missing out on anything and we're going to be working with them for that. But it's just going to be so key that that open communication stays open throughout all of this.
Thank you, Mrs. Constantino. Brian, do you have another caller?
We do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
This is Michaeli.
Hello?
From Olden. I saw August 31st, they're going to have some trainer. Can you please talk a little bit more about that? The students training, the parents training?
Okay, Mr. Malone, can you speak to that? I believe the caller's referring to the 10 PD days that have been added in.
Right, no, I think what the, that answer was to a question in response to how are, you know, students going to get used to wearing masks? So one of the suggestions we put out there is opportunities for staff to interact with families during that time to kind of go over what it feels like to have a mask, to encourage kids to wear masks at home if you're ready to come in. As far as the safety training that's embedded in the, before school starts, that would be a specific training related to staff for COVID around distancing, how to wear their PPE, what other considerations, kind of a lot of what we just talked about, how to self-assess and make sure you stay home if you're not feeling well, what the protocol might be for a student who was not wearing a mask, how to utilize the, and getting contact with the nurse's office, those type things. I'm not sure if that answers your question about training.
I would-
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to add one piece about the training. Our students will need some additional training, right, from their teacher on how to be a remote learner, so we know having them in front of us to do that will help train students and families with better tools than we were able to do in March. So that would accompany our safety and health training would be just how are we going to interact with these lessons if we're remote?
Great, thank you, Mrs. Reagan. Brian?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, whenever you're ready, caller.
Yep, we're ready. Hello, you're on.
I'm on.
You're on.
Yes, this is Leah McDermott. I was wondering what we're going to do about lunches because I really, I really love lunch and I'm, I'm just intrigued on what we're going to do for the lunches.
Thank you for the question. So we identified in the original July 31th supplemental in regards to feasibility in the all-in students' lunch as a challenge. Even if we brought all students back at three feet, anytime a student takes their mask down to do something like eat, there has to be six feet. So therefore, you're not able to fit everybody in the cafeteria. The one option that's brought up by DESE is possibly eating in the classroom. But if you did have students at three feet in the classroom for instruction, you would have to move out half the students to establish six feet if you were eating in the classroom. The question is, where do they go? Can they all fit in the cafeteria? Do you have to utilize another space? It also gets into a piece of if you're separating students out and moving them, who's, who's watching those students? Who's with those students? Who's responsible for those students? So we do think that certainly we could do it, but it's going to require probably the hiring of additional staff to supervise students while they eat. It would also involve hiring additional staff from food services, be if we were going to get into delivering meals to certain locations and elements like that. It's also uncertain what the level of additional cleaning would be put on top of that if we begin to serve food in other locations other than the cafeteria. Uh, and what level of cleaning that would need to be done? And do we need to hire additional custodial staff to support that operation? It can be done, uh, if all students were back. But it would be difficult and it would cost a, a bit more money out of the budget. In a hybrid model, one of the things the models we're looking at in a hybrid would be to have students, uh, attend school and then before lunch is served, actually move for the second half of their day back home to do remote and have a grab and go lunch, which would allow our food service staff to feed students, but, uh, give them a grab and go lunch that they could take home and eat at home and then resume the rest of their school day remotely. That's one of the considerations we're looking under a, um, a hybrid type plan that would solve, uh, the cafeteria and the food service situation.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Brian, do you have another caller?
Uh, we do, Mr. Chairman. Uh, caller, whenever you're ready.
Hi, this is Colleen again, uh, from Cotton Road. We had just got disconnected.
Okay, great. Welcome back.
Um, my, my other question was, is when you say that you're talking to the town and, and stuff, I know that the town of Tuxbury is not even open to the public yet. Neither are the banks. I have family who work in Boston and they work for, uh, Brigham and Women's Hospital, financial area and also Blue Cross Blue Shield, which are not having their employees go back to work. They're still staying remote until at least.
I don't know what's happening with that caller, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, okay.
Hi, this is Susan. I can answer that if you'd like.
Thank you, please do, Susan.
Uh, just, just to let you know, um, as of this Monday, the town hall is open. It's kind of a soft opening, so I guess I'm letting the cat out of the bag. Uh, but the, all the departments are open to the public. Uh, we do house, still have alternative, you know, drop-off box outside. Prior to that, we were fully staffed for the last probably eight weeks. And, uh, myself and the health department and other essential workers have been here since, since it started in February. So we have been fully active, whether we were remote or onsite, um, since, since the Italians, the kids came home from Italy. So, but yes, the town hall is back open.
Thank you, Mrs. Sawyer. Brian, do you have another caller?
Not yet, Mr. Chairman, but I'd give it a few minutes. I'm sure we'll get.
I'm going to do this. I'm going to go to, uh, our clerk, Mrs., um, Demos. And I know, uh, I gave, uh, Mr. Cutlass opportunity earlier. I'm sure she might have some questions. So I'll yield, yield the floor to Mrs. Demos, our clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To be quite honest, I have quite a, a few thoughts. When we are looking at the hybrid plan, um, that we are going to be tasked to look at for the three plans for our decision, I just want to clarify with Chris and Brenda. Are we looking at the hybrid partial or the hybrid full? I feel as though when I'm looking at the hybrid partial, um, at each one of the, the age levels and developmental stages of the kids, there still may be too many transitions, no matter what the age of the kiddo is, you know, whether it's my, the K-1 babies who have, you know, come in and then you get them on the bus, they go home. It's, it's just too long of a time in between the transitions or a lot of transitions between, um, home and school and then the high school kids who are just like, oh, I'm done, I'm going home, I'm not interested in signing back on. Have we, how are we going to differentiate when we go to, um, approve one of the plans? Am I, because I, I, in my, just need to be clear on hybrid partial or hybrid full is what, um, we should be focusing on?
Mr. Malone?
Yeah, and I, and I think it's a great question. I think one of the challenges in the, the hybrid full, which means a student would come, let's just for, for discussion sake, there was surveys out there about, you know, a week on, week off or two days on and two days off. Let's, for discussion sake, say it's two days on and then Thursday and Friday is remote. If that's a full day, we still do have the challenge of, of lunch. We could serve in the classroom, we could do other things, there'd be less students, we could do that. But likely it's going to be additional staffing to serve the lunches and also to clean up. Uh, the other piece in a full day is becomes if teacher X is teaching the students in front of them, it's their, let's just say it's a fourth grade class and they're teaching half of their class all day. The question becomes, who is teaching the other half of the students who are in remote? If those students are in person for a full day, who's teaching the other students?
But shouldn't we be looking at like project-based learning at that point and having the teacher implementing a lesson for those students, um, when she has them in person or he has them in person? So that they can continue with an independent, an asynchronous learning assignment?
You certainly could do that. I think if you look at the remote learning guidance from the state, specific to the remote learning, if we look at some of the parent feedback on what's happened in the remote learning, many of the things parents are looking for are interaction. We're also taking attendance every day. We're reading, we're interacting. So someone would have to be available to do that. We do have specialists that could, you know, instruct during some of that time and some other things of that nature. But I, I'm not sure we wouldn't lose the whole class model in that aspect. If the teacher is totally focused on the students for a full day, half the class in front of them, the question becomes, are we providing a high-quality remote experience for the other half of the students? The project-based learning and the other pieces that kind of came out is part of how we left remote learning in the spring. I think from the DESE guidance and what we're hearing from parents, I, I think they're looking for a more robust remote learning experience.
So that's when I think we need to come up with some documentation on accountability, right? So we need to have expectations of what the administration's, um, accountability is going to be, what the teacher's accountability, the paraprofessionals accountability, related service accountability, parents and students and caregivers, right? So that we are all as a community invested in this learning opportunity, that we need to be clear and we need to be consistent. We need to let everyone on the same page know that there will be clear and open communication. There will be consistent, meaningful feedback on a regular end. I, this, the, I know I'm going a few steps ahead of myself, but we need to, the community to know that when we're talking hybrid and there's some sort of remote learning, there is still going to be assignments that need to be turned in on an online platform, that will be assessed, that will be graded, that will, we will have grades. We will have, uh, students that are accountable for attendance and time on learning. We have 900 hours that we need to account for and 950. We, we need to be keeping our eye on those numbers and making sure we're accountable for it. I just don't think that this hybrid partial with all the transitions in it is a beneficial model to us in Tuxbury. I just, I, I guess I needed to hear a little bit more. I understand the ideas of, you know, the cafeteria is hard, but if we're doing a hybrid model and we're doing six feet in the classroom, then the kids eat in the classroom and we have to kind of make it work with the, maybe para or specialist taking the attendance on the other end. I think I just need a little bit more clarity on the hybrid partial before I, you know, fully wrap my brain around it because to me it makes more sense to have them in. You know, when you get those babies in the building, you just get them in for the full day. Get two full days of learning in. To me, Wednesday should be a community building day. We should be focusing on your social, emotional learning, community building. Take your attendance with the entire class remotely. Do a morning meeting, expectations for the week. Kind of teaching them how they're going to learn and what your objectives are and what we're going to be doing this week. I definitely think that, you know, and then you go back to Thursday, Friday for the other cohort, like an AA remote for everyone on Wednesday, BB would be what I would think of for the hybrid. When you get into a pa, uh, hybrid model like that, I do think that we need to be looking at the high school, maybe thinking of doing away with the waterfall schedule for the year and doing a five-day blocks. Try to get them all in that way because how are you going to get the AP and the, the honors and all of that in, in that timely manner? And believe you me, I'm looking at this through a lens of many different, I am a building principal. I'm a parent of a high-needs student. I'm a parent of an autoimmune, a compromised baby. Well, she's not a baby, she'll be a senior. I am, I've taught here in Tuxbury for 19 years before I went to be the principal. I'm not looking at this as though just one lens of, I'm looking through it through the policy and budget in my job as a school committee member. I want to make sure that the teachers are safe, the staff is safe, the students are learning, the students are safe. And we're doing the best that we can for these kiddos. I really truly want to see them in the buildings. I just need to see the safety precautions are thought of. Maybe we're thinking out of the box. Maybe we're looking and saying, okay, you know, we do a hybrid for only certain grade levels and do like a partial return and then introduce more as we see that the numbers don't, you know, spike up. Are these questions that are too out in left field? I know I'm going a little bit of, ahead of what August 10th needs us to do, but I feel like if I'm going to make the right decision tomorrow for this community, I, I kind of just, these are the questions going through my brain.
Chris, may I?
Sure.
Okay, so I think you're asking all the questions we're asking too, Shannon. And, um, so there's really, and I, I know this, um, does not please people if I say this and it's going to come out probably sounding wrong, but philosophically, we're, we're saying we're going to have an all-in plan. We know there's challenges. We're going to have a hybrid plan. It is partial in and whether that partial in is half a day, uh, two-thirds a day, a full day, it's still partial in and partial out. And or whether we're going to have an all-out, everybody's out. What is crystal clear in that it is when I think, and I, I, I would like to believe when people looked at the week on, week off, the educational impact here is a long time before there's in-person with a particular group, right? But even on a two-day, if I don't see my students for two days, and let's pretend now you're the, it's a weekend, two days and a weekend at all. I and all, the A and B cohort are marching at the same content delivery. The instruction is different, but it's the same content standards on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. There is opportunity, and this is what we grapple with. There's a lot of opportunity to lose a student with what time before we have check-in with that, that B group. It may be, it could be a different, you know, on a different day. But so this, these are the details we have to figure out in the hybrid model. If we look at what other districts have done, not that they're right, not that they're wrong, we're seeing them use their early release schedule. We as a district said that's too early. You know, we really are looking at, at maximizing the in-person time and supporting the B group on the same day. So we have to figure out how to do that. Um, I, 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 it is very complex and we have to think about then the very high-needs students and how much extra time do they need? They, you know, they're, they're going to need that extra time at the end of whatever that content day is or whatever, and it could be at the beginning. But so you're asking the same questions we are. What we have to be very careful with is time on learning does not count if it is, uh, study. It does not count if it isn't instructional content. So we're cognizant that these are, again, just, um, high-impact instructional days. We want to make sure we're not losing students because we don't see them for a lengthy period of time. So that, that's at the front of our thought. Uh, the schedules will play out as they're best, uh, meant for each of the schools or grade levels. And whether they're the same or different.
Right, right.
Means to be seen.
Yeah, and I do, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Brenda. I was, um, I would just like to add with the one caveat. Regardless of what the specific plan is, we still have a legal obligation negotiate, you know, uh, those changes with all of our employee groups to make sure that we can get back safely, uh, as you, as you properly referenced, to make sure that everyone is safe, staff, students, uh, and families. Because honestly, those kids are going to go home. So, um, it, it, I'm going to go back to Brian because, um, I know there's more callers there and we can come back to you, Shannon, in a moment. Brian, do you have someone there?
We do, Mr. Chairman. Whenever you call. I'm ready.
Hi, my name is Amy Ma. I'm from 16 Patriot Road. Uh, my first question was just, uh, expressed by the previous caller about who's going to be responsible for planning, teaching and assessing the remote cohort when the classroom teacher is educating the in-person cohort. So another question that I have is during the remote cohort for hybrid model and the mandatory attendance that you've discussed, how is this going to work for young learners who will be at daycare or who can't get read? Will the children have an opportunity to complete the work outside of traditional school hours to allow for parent assistance after work?
Great question, Mr. Malone.
Yes, you know, we, we want to accommodate, we realize that in a pandemic and if we're in a, uh, hybrid situation, it affects not only schools, it affects parents. So we, we want to be sensitive to parents that predominantly have been looking for some more realistic impression of a school day, even though it's in remote, as far as interaction with teachers and a schedule and all those kind of things. That may not work for any, everybody. So certainly in a hybrid model, if that's what you're referring to, we would have the opportunity for students who, for instance, are in a separate daycare or unable to get online at a particular time when there's synchronous learning or something, that we will have an opportunity for them to either have an alternate assignment to do at a different time or to look at how we can support that student more specifically when they're back in person on the alternative day. So it's not a situation where an individual family situation that would not allow a student to be online at a particular time is going to be prohibitive of them being marked, uh, you know, absent or not getting credit. We'll figure out alternative ways to support them.
And, and Chris, I'd like to add to that because I've been, you know, highly focused on this. You know, remote learning provides flexibility in some regards and the remote learning part of the hybrid. But we also know that there are going to be older students who are helping to support their younger sibling in any portion of remote learning. But and, and, and I think Ms. Demos brought this up too. What about if the high schooler doesn't check back in? They're still responsible. If, let's say that high schooler is, is, is waiting or having lunch with their, you know, younger sibling and helping to support that kiddo to get online and do their lesson, the high schooler is still responsible for their, uh, due assignments, for their assessments. And so we understand there may be need for accommodating that attendance check-in when a student gets home or when a student goes to daycare. But all students, this is real school. It's challenging, but all students will be responsible because all courses will still be, will be graded. This will be different than the spring and, uh, attendance will have to accommodate what the family need is. But the students will still be on the hook for the, um, assessments and the, and the assignments.
Thank you, Mrs. Reagan, and thank you for your call. Brian?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, whenever you're ready, caller.
Yep.
Hello?
Hello, you're on.
Hey, I'm just, uh, wondering, this is. I'm just wondering if, um, if someone were to threaten my health with a firearm or if they're cockpit on me without a mask on, what would I do? Would I report it to the principal or to the police?
Good. Can I just get your name and address for the record, sir?
Uh, he decided to hang up, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. You have another caller, Brian?
Uh, not at this moment.
Great, I'm going to, uh, turn to, uh, Mr. Wilson and give him, uh, the floor to ask if he has one.
Um, thank you. I really don't have any questions. I've sort of lived through the, um, um, this putting together this reopening plan. I've also been reading plans from other communities just to keep myself up to speed. I guess, Keith, I'm not sure if this question's for you. Just in general, um, as I go to bed tonight and think about, uh, tomorrow's decision, we're really voting on, um, the high level, either all-in, hybrid or remote. And then I believe this, this group, uh, along with the, you know, the administrators and the DLC will have, um, a tremendous amount of work to do to put together the fine details within that plan. Is that, am I thinking about this the right way? Because some of the questions Shannon was asking, um, are also things that I have going on a, sort of a side sheet, um, under each plan. I have a, you know, sort of a group of questions, um, or things that I feel like need to be defined. I mean, we're not doing all of that tomorrow, I assume. Is that?
You're absolutely, absolutely correct. Absolutely correct, Mr. Wilson. The first step of the DESI, and I'm sure Chris will jump in if I missed up, although I don't think the first step of the plan was simply to have all three plans submitted to DESI by July thirty-first. The next deadline was simply for districts who had then been given the authority, I'm not sure when, sometime around the end of July, to make a decision what they felt is best interest for their district. So that being said, and as I said when Mrs. Demos was speaking, yeah, we're gonna, you know, those are, this is, I think, the best way for people to understand it, is this is just the foundation or a framework of which we're finally going to build, you know, the schoolhouse. And on, you know, just vote on what we think will be the best start for our district. Now, some things might come into play before that, where that might decision might be made for us, who knows? But once we vote on that, we're still going to have to meet, as I said earlier, with all our employee groups. We acknowledge our responsibility under the law to make sure that we bargain in good faith with those groups. That process has already started. That process is going to continue. I can tell you, as adamant as we are on safety restrictions and regulations, so is the union. So a lot of this is, you know, it's more information than the community is seeing. But certainly, there is a ton more work to do, and the work will really start Thursday after our vote.
Mr. Chairman, I, just to add on, I couldn't agree more. I think this is a time-and-place vote. It will allow us, you know, some of these require, are going to require more fine-tuning the other. The most layered and complicated is the hybrid. That's going to require some extensive thinking and proactive pieces and continue to looking at options and doing further surveying and looking at all other aspects. What's going along in a silo next to this, as you said, we are negotiating particularly with the teachers' union. So those are working conditions that have to be negotiated on top of that. And additionally, you know, we're discussing something here on August fifth. School committee is making a decision on August sixth. We have no idea what this pandemic is going to look like on September sixteenth. So I think we've got to be able to move forward in a way that's flexible, that I think we can have certainly a finer tune of commitment in planning after August sixth to the, with the school committee charging us with moving forward, focusing on which plan we're going to open in. But the planning for the other two models doesn't stop. It continues to go on.
Thank you. So Brian, do we have any other callers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Whenever you're ready, caller.
We're ready.
Hi, I have a question for Mr. Malone. My name is Addison Lane. I'm on Anover Street, Tewksbury. I just wanted you to, was wondering if you could elaborate a little bit more on the PPE that is being provided to the teachers. I understand that you're going to be providing masks and garments for their clothing and whatnot. Are those masks that you're providing, are they going to be droplet protection masks?
No, the mask that, I don't know the specification. Maybe Kelly, you can help me with it. But the masks that are recommended by DESE are the typical cloth masks that come in. Again, we're also looking at distancing. It's not just masks and PPE. We're looking at this. We'll have gloves available. We have, you know, some populations of students that, you know, may require contact. And we want to make sure that available to staff will be gowns and so forth. Kelly, do you have a specific element on the, we're doing the typical, we've already purchased them, but there's no requirement on a specification of the mask from DESE?
There isn't, but we will make sure that the PPE is within the guidance of the Department of Public Health and the CDC and what their recommendations are. We will be following those.
And we have supplemental, if we have a student population that we might be a little bit more worried about either physical or droplet contact, we'll have face shields available in addition to the mask in that situation. And we'll work with parents who may have a difficult situation with a child, how we can help. There's some alternatives out there they could look at. But from DESE, as of right now, a face shield of itself does not replace the need for a mask. They could be worn in tandem, but one does, the shield does not replace the need for a mask.
Thank you very much. Brian, do you have someone else?
We do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Hello?
Hello?
How are you?
I'm good. How are you? My name is Greg Mar. I live on Patriot Road. I'm just, I'm calling to kind of voice solidarity with teachers. There's a lot of abuse going on online of our teachers. And, you know, a lot of the things that parents aren't seeing in terms of teachers being told to get their affairs in order, you know, update their wills, their life insurance, all of that. And meanwhile, they're being dached all over the internet by parents who are saying they're lazy, they're doing other things. And I'd really like to see more support, you know, as town folks, as well as, you know, the administration, school committee, all that, supporting our teachers and kind of explaining more of the situation they're in, rather than just, you know, calling them lazy when really they want to be in school as much as the parents do. But they're seeing kind of the backside of just how dangerous this is.
Greg, I could just like to respond to that, to tell you, I don't, I can't tell you how much appreciation I have for our Tewksbury teachers and teachers in general. When we originally, even prior to being tasked with having to make this decision, the school committee went right to the superintendent, and we wanted to make it abundantly clear that teachers were involved from the very beginning in all of this planning that was going to go on. That's very important to myself as someone that supports teachers and someone in the school committee as well. So I know our school committee feels that way. As I said, they've been involved in the task force from day one. Things that they brought to the table that are going to be voted on tomorrow are, I can tell you, certainly because of things that were insisted by teachers, and we have the utmost respect for them. So I can't speak for online and social media and all that stuff, but I would like to.
Even in the, say, the email that went out regarding the survey, you know, there was no explanation other than, oh, the teachers seemed to disagree, and I think that ignited the online community as well. So this is to the parents that are listening as much as to everyone else, that the teachers are in a very difficult situation. And, you know, I think we need to stand behind them more as a town and supporting them more and explaining more of what they're.
Did we lose him, Brian?
We did, Mr. Chairman. We have another caller right here.
Hello?
Hello?
Yes.
You're on.
All right, so my mother won't drive me and my friends to the Westford Cores, and I was just wondering what you think. Do you think she should drive me?
Do you have name and address for the record, sir?
He hung up, Mr. Chairman.
I assume you have someone else, Brian?
All right, my question, my name's Nicole, by the way. I'm on Riverdale Ave.
Thank you, Nicole. Thanks for calling in.
My question has to deal with if there is a positive result that's received by the school or the district during the day, and the child or the teacher is in the school. How is that going to be handled? Would that be automatic dismissal? And if you take all those kids out of the class, how do you maintain your cohorts?
Good question, Mr. Malone.
Yeah, thanks. And a lot of that was embedded into the DESE guidance that we sent home to parents. So there are some specific circumstances that you'd want to ask. You know, if someone came up positive, what was the level of contact they had with the cohort? Is the cohort considered a contact? That's something we coordinate directly with our medical staff and partners at the town to determine. If it's determined that they are a direct cohort and they need to leave, we would certainly look at sending the entire cohort home and dismissing the cohort and having them picked up and give them further instructions on whether they need to be tested, quarantined, isolated. And then we'd also look at emergency cleaning of the area that that might be embedded in. But some of this goes down to the level of who was identified as a positive test? When were they identified? How long were they interacting with the cohort? Were they interacting with the cohort? All those questions would be have to be asked. But yes, any aspect of dismissal or immediately reacting to potential safety cases would be something that we would certainly move on right away.
My follow-up to that is, if that's the case and the cohort is fairly large and you're talking about a separate COVID kind of waiting area that's different than the other nurse area, is it adequate spacing for people to also socially distance, assuming you're dismissing a large group of people at the same time?
Right. If it was a larger cohort that was located in a classroom, we may not move the cohort. We may keep them there and dismiss them and remove them right from that, because we're going to clean that area anyways. And I don't know what the definition of a large cohort would be. Let's just say it's six or seven students, maybe, or something like that. So if we aren't able to socially distance that many students in the alternative nursing area, and it is an entire cohort, we could utilize the space available because we probably consider that compromised as it is and dismiss right from there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, very much. Brian?
I believe this is a caller right now. Oh, they just dropped. You're on the line, caller.
Oh, great.
Hello? You're on.
Hey, calling from St. Vonnich, eighty-seven Florence Ave in Tewksbury. I just wondered, this I've been asked before, I may have missed it, but how does the voting work tomorrow? Is it like a majority on one plan, or do you decide on a plan and get it to go through? How does it, how does the vote work?
It's, we're just going to take a vote on the plan. We're going to have a public comment time similar to today. Any last questions that my colleagues have, which I'm sure are going to be a lot as we're taking most of the time to get resident input right now? Any final questions will be asked and answered, and then I assume someone will make a motion. And we will vote what we feel is appropriate and the safe plan to start the reopening in the fall.
Okay, so all the plans will be laid out, and then whichever one gets the most votes will go through.
Can I interject here, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
The committee is voting on, is approving a full plan and voting on one of the models to start the reopening of the 2021 school year. Keeping in mind that at any time, whether before the school year begins or during the school year, we will be most likely pivoting, and I'm going to be optimistic in saying towards all-in person. So we'll need a plan for that, or we may have to pivot to, you know, from all-in person to remote to hybrid at any time. So they're approving a plan and voting on the reopening model. All three models are part of our plan.
Okay, all right, that makes it clearer. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Brian?
Not yet, Mr. Chairman.
Great. I'm going to yield the floor to Mr. Stadman if he has any questions.
No, I just want to thank the district leadership team, the reopening team, the rest of my colleagues who have asked other questions. They've cleared up a few issues that I had. I don't want to ask any issues or other questions that I do have. They were all answered during this session. So I'll leave it brief. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stadman. I had a question for Mr. Malone. I know this had come to me in a couple emails and was conversation. And it's regards to the, I'm going to call it the remote academy, and I apologize if I have that wrong. That's for someone that's a high risk, that they're going right into a robust year. Is that correct, Mr. Malone, of all remote learning?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we're kind of using that term just to differentiate who either by medical need or by parent choice is doing remote learning only, particularly if we, if the district was starting out in either a hybrid or an all-return. So we're trying to differentiate that. We're using the word academy right now to kind of describe that as a different element. But if we were in a, in a remote learning model, in other words, the committee decided that we were going to start out in a remote learning model, there would not be a remote learning academy because everyone would be in remote learning with all of our teachers focused on supporting that instruction. So this is the remote learning piece that kind of goes along in a silo if the district is as a whole in either a hybrid or an all-in return.
Great, that's wonderful clarity. The other clarity was if we're not in, if we're either in a hybrid or a all-in, and someone has to go to remote, you know, how are those plans going to relate from the person that had chose the remote learning academy? And I guess, you know, how does that curriculum align? Where someone may test and say, oh, boy, now I can't, you know, I have to go from remote. They were either in an all-in or a hybrid, and they have to go to the, you know, I'll call it our remote, the district's remote. And, you know, how is that relating to the learning academy or the remote learning academy?
Right, and just a two-part thing. I just was notified by a parent by email that the, it looks like the YouTube channel has frozen. I don't know if, Brian, you can look at that or if that's in fact, or it's been freed up, but it may be something to consider. But as far as transitioning a piece, a couple of these things, you know, depend a little bit. If we get into a short-term situation and we're in a hybrid element and the student is in the hybrid model and they are quarantined or they have an illness and they are not able to participate, we can probably still support them in the hybrid model, just focusing on the remote half of it. If we're talking about transitions fully from either all-in person or hybrid to remote, that should be fairly seamless. It's a little bit more complicated coming back. If a student is in all-remote and wants to come back into in-person, we have to consider the cohort in which they're returning into and a way to bridge the learning that's been done in remote to either the hybrid or the all-in person. And likely, that would need to take a few weeks of transition time. And also, we want to make sure for safety reasons, if they're joining a new cohort, that we have that all set in place.
And may I add, only because this, I love to talk about this stuff, but I know that ice glaze over when I talk about content objectives and standards and curriculum maps. But this is why that foundation is so critical in any teaching and learning model. If we have very succinct transitions from one content objective to the next, regardless whether we're in person or a person is remote, on the phone or by district choice, what we can do is take whatever learning management system we do use and have those content objectives to the best of our ability reflect what's happening in person in the class. And when that happens, in simple terms, that's called a scope and sequence, or what are we learning on Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday, Thursday, Friday? So that a student is prepared, or at least we hope prepared. When we're not there, it's difficult for us to, you know, have as many measures to see where they're at. But then at least we know that we were marching to the same beat, and we hope the student is prepared to come back in person when they either are able to, feel confident doing that. And that's, that's the job of trying to align these models, you know, at the same time. I don't know if that helps or.
Right. Yeah, no, and I'm going to actually yield the floor back to the clerk, back to Mrs. Demos.
Hi, thank you. I appreciate that. I just want to reiterate what you had said on behalf of the committee is that I have the utmost support for our teachers in this district. And I never want there to be a question in the community as far as how the school committee sees their work and their efforts. It's a difficult time. I understand that, but we support them.
Okay, I don't know if you had any more questions?
Yeah, I thought that I had lost you. It went, I thought my house lost connection here.
It's still on.
My last question I had, sorry, was more for Chris and Brenda. We know we were given class sizes pretty recently. Can you just confirm if those class sizes are the same or if we've seen an increase in students leaving for private schools or any remote learning academy or anything ahead of time?
I don't think we've seen a specific loss of that. I know the commissioner stated in a comment the other day statewide that they are seeing a transition of because, and I believe his reasoning, and I'm just quoting him, I have no idea knowing if this is true, but because private schools are offering in-person, full-day teaching, that there has been a large number of public school students transitioning to private schools for that reason. I'm just quoting what he said. I have no data or information. I don't think we have evidence that that is specifically having in Tewksbury, but again, Tewksbury hasn't made a decision yet about which model they're going to start with either.
Right. I was just looking at those class sizes and comparing them to what information we were given as a committee as far as how many desks would fit into classrooms according to taking those class sizes and, you know, making them, splitting them in half essentially, right, for cohorts.
And the principals have done that task and looked at the actual class sizes and see what they can fit. I think the most complicated element you'll have is at the high school with some larger, you know, class sizes. They also have a lot of smaller class sizes, but they have some larger class sizes. They have some ideas about how to overcome that and still maintain the spacing, whether that would be three feet or six feet, in using satellite locations and the use of instructional aids to help out in some other elements like that. I think they had examined that schedule even over a month ago to make some of those determinations and they, although they don't have it resolved with personnel, they know exactly what they would need to do and what classes they would need to target to overcome that.
And we have the satellite spaces per building in order for that to happen?
The high school is the main issue and yes, there's definitely satellite space available. We could apply that to other buildings. I think the biggest building you probably have a problem with that is at the Dewing School and maybe just the additional space just because of the overall size of the, the Trahan and the North Street.
Right. Like I go back to my, my old classroom in the Trahan with the slaring windows that was, tend to be like, I don't want to say half the size of the original building classrooms, but they're definitely smaller. So when we're looking at an average class size with this picture that I was shown, are we taking into account those rooms at the, you know, the North Street Trahan that have the smaller footprint?
Yes, those principals have actually looked at actual class sizes and actual locations.
Okay.
Some furnishings may need to be removed from the room. Shannon, I'm sure you're dealing with that in your own district. If I could just remind parents that are out there and just thank them because we know they're being very patient, waiting to hear not only this vote, but then class assignments. We haven't been able to send those home at this point because we're still questioning how we're starting the school year. So that work, as everyone has said, really begins once we...
Right.
...finish this process.
So are we, Brian, do we have other callers? Because I don't want to keep down my list of questions if I'm holding up the community.
We do have some callers.
Okay, so I'll, I'll hold the rest for later.
Thank you, Mrs. Demos. Go ahead, Brian.
Caller, whenever you're ready.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello. Yeah, this is Glenn from Woodford Road. How you doing?
Good, thank you.
So my question is tomorrow's vote by the school committee, that's to approve the three scenarios, opening scenarios, is that correct?
It's to approve the plan, which includes three models, and then there will be a vote by the school committee which model we will start the reopening in.
And what's, what's the criteria for that vote? Like what, what would you be taking into consideration? I believe, did somebody say earlier that there was two positive cases in Tewksbury? Is that correct? Right now? I thought earlier?
There's six, six active cases.
There are six actual cases.
Sorry?
Six, four cases. I think that the data has been provided today.
Okay. And so tomorrow, after the vote to approve those three, what will the criteria be to narrow it down to one? What will, what will the school committee take into consideration?
The, well, it will be a simple majority vote on what the plan that the school committee feels is best for students, staff and for families.
Okay. I, what would they do, like what's their, I guess I'll find out tomorrow, what, what the, what they would take into consideration, saw that, would it be the number of positive cases?
I could jump in? Yeah, hold on one second. We're, we're taking in all of the information that if you started here at one o'clock today, we're also taking into consideration from all, for all of the employees that work within the school district. We're taking into account the survey stuff. We're taking into account what we're hearing from residents. We're taking into account what we feel is going to be best for students. And in this case, you know, typically, you know, all of the decision-making is usually revolves around that. You know, it's pretty easy. We're, we're, we're here to try to improve academic outcomes, right, and improve outcomes for children. In this instance, it's unique because that doesn't end when a student walks into the school or leaves home from school. Now, you know, there's so much of an impact that, you know, is involved in public health and safety. So all of those factors are going to go to contribute to, you know, my personal decision-making process. I can't speak for my fellow members. I will certainly yield the floor to Mr. Malone to what he had to say, but, you know, those are among some of the things which I am going to weigh to make my decision.
Okay, I appreciate that. I don't have any guys on the touchline to do with that. Thank you for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you for calling in, Glenn. Brian, do you have someone else?
One second, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Here we go. All right, whenever you're ready, caller.
Hello?
You're on.
Hi, my name is Kate Clark. I am a teacher at the high school. I don't live in town, but honestly, I work at the high school. I had a question. Is it possible to vote on two different plans for reopening? Or is it one plan for the entire district?
I'll yield to Mr. Malone. It's my understanding that we need to vote on, our focus has been on the, the three plans or the three, you know, one plan, I'm sorry, that includes the three models. And then there's a separate vote of which the district has the opportunity to vote for which they think is in the best interest of their, but I will yield the floor to Mr. Malone.
Right. And I, and I think that is the vote and that's the starting point. As we've said before, that there's further development in any one of these plans that wind up being prioritized by the school committee for us to move forward with. Within those conversations, we could look at things, particularly when you think about logistical issues, transportation, food service, other things like that of the ability of how we start that and at what pace. I think those could be live discussions, but I don't think those would be considered plans of themselves, like voting for two plans or a combination of two or anything like that. I think it has to be a plan that we're going to move forward for with the 16th, with the information that we know. Could we have further discussions about what that actually looks like in consideration for rolling it out? I think those could be active conversations, sure.
We couldn't do, for instance, like remote for the high school and hybrid for the young grade.
You, you could. I don't think there's anything preventing that. I don't think from the task force work, from the leadership team work, from anything of that, we've kind of pointed in that direction. I also, as superintendent, I would get very worried about have disruption to families and students around having different plans for one child in the family than the other. How you roll it out or how it looks different in one school compared to the other, I think there's a lot of room for conversations in that. But you might be in a scenario where you have medical situations at a giving school and you might be moving that school to remote learning for a week or two if you had to, if this situation called for it. So I think, you know, anything's on the table, but we have not considered, I think, in the task force or at the leadership team, putting one school or one grade level on one plan and another school or another grade level on a different plan.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Brian?
One second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Hello?
Hello? Hi, I'm a teacher at the Jonathan Ryan School and I have a question about the hybrid model.
Yep.
On your slide where you were comparing pros and cons for the hybrid, I think it was suggested that as a pro reason, there was less exposure to kids of COVID because only half of the student population would be present. I think there's something else that needs to be considered because some of the teachers see all the building, all the kids. So in that case, all the children would be exposed to friends or specialist teachers. And in reverse, the specialist teachers would also be exposed to the entire student population. And I think that's a consideration that needs to be made.
Okay, Mr. Malone?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And, and certainly it is. I think one of the thinking models in the hybrid, particularly with specialists, would be looking at, since they see a large number of students, where can they best support us, particularly in the remote portion of the hybrid? And are they able to actually capture a larger number of students remotely and more regularly? And also help out with the family contact, the individual student contact, the synchronious teaching elements? And would they be able to accomplish that to enhance the remote portion of that piece? Certainly we could look at, you know, that in-person part, but the point you're making is, is valid. We'd want to be concerned about the cohort model on those pieces. And, you know, we, we've got some considerations that we've thought of about how to provide specialist instruction that would not kind of go against some of our cohort thinking or kind of our exposure thinking. And we do think because the hybrid has not only an in-person, in-person portion, but a remote portion, that would be a good opportunity to overcome some of those pieces.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Malone. Brian, do we have any other callers?
None at the moment, Mr. Chairman, but as, as normal, I'd like to remind you that there is a delay on YouTube of about 30 seconds to 45 seconds.
Well, if we don't get anyone in the next 30 seconds, I certainly would like to thank everyone.
Mr. Chairman, we do have someone right here.
Sure. Put them through, please.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Sheila Castillo. I'm living to Woodford Drive.
Welcome. What's your question or comment?
Hi, my question is regarding remote learning. You mentioned that, that remote learning was going to be different than the spring. My question would be how different? Because there is, even if we chose any other different, there is a possibility too that they are going to go back to remote learning. So what's the plan for that?
Great, great question. Mr. Malone?
Ms. Reagan, that one goes right to you. Yes. Well, again, the, the remote learning in the spring, if you remember, first was reactionary, safety first. There was three weeks-ish of not remote learning, but enrichment. And then there was covering of already pre-learned content. And then in the final phase three of the remote learning, it was new content. Remote learning moving forward would be grade level, new content. We would expect students, and I have an email actually from a parent too that's asking, would, would these classes be in real time? Yes, they would be in real time, although again, I have to say that we would have to pay very special attention to families who real time is just not an option for them. But there would be attendance, there would be grades, there would be new content, there will be assessments, students are still preparing for the MCAS. It is, it is just a different mode of learning the grade level content. Now, what does that mean? We have to train, we definitely have to further train our staff. We have amazing teachers who are able to use Google Classroom and Screencastify and ways to engage students in, when they were at home, ways to support families. We know that we can do better and that not all families are ready to receive digital instruction as well. So we'll have to support families that way. I'm not sure if I hit the question particularly you were asking, but we know it needs to be more robust, right? That's an adjective that we're talking, a more robust learning platform. But there are routines and expectations and we're going to really need more than ever to partner with families because I know as a, as a parent and when my kiddos were teenagers, they would much more do what, they would do what the teacher asked them to do much easier than they would do what I asked them to do. So we need to work together so that if your kiddo is at home in remote learning, we're helping to support your child and you.
Yes, that was a big concern because there is a possibility that eventually they may have to, have to go to remote learning. But I have another question regarding hybrid. Is there's going to be any possibility from, for the parents to have any feedback regarding the cohort? Because I know that, I think that many parents are going to need support from different parents. So it would be interesting if we could have some input about the combination of children we're going to have in the community.
I don't know that there'll be, so let me go back to the parent input. We've asked parents a couple of different ways, a couple of different surveys on their remote learning experience. We will definitely continue to do that. What we learn from parents, what we learn from our staff is there needs to be synchronous live time with teachers and students. And then likewise, parents really want synchronous live time with their peers, so student peers, so they can learn and collaborate together. And then they want, as much as we heard we want a routine and we want a schedule that mirrors or reflects the school day, we also need flexibility because our real lives are happening side by side with our two or three kiddos at home. So we will...
Ms. Reagan, could I, could I just interrupt for a second?
Yes.
I believe the caller's question was, are we going to take into consideration circumstances in a hybrid model? I believe that's the question that I heard.
Right. I think, I think you're right, Mr. Chairman. And one of the things, I think the thing we're, we're definitely considering is, is siblings. I think, I have to be honest, after that, I think the list could become endless. And if we try to match up every cohort with friends or neighbors or who someone works better with or something like that, I think that would be an endless process. I think we need to have a fair, reasonable and consistent approach to how students will fall, just the way we do when we look at how they're assigned to classes and everything like that. But I'm, I'm sure if we have to move students into cohort models, there will be situations where people are not happy, either friends have been dislodged or neighbors. I'm not sure we're going to be able to react to a whole lot of that.
And, and, okay, I'm happy that you clarified that. And not only that, we know that parents are already collaborating. It takes a village and, and that some parents as essential workers themselves are just struggling with how can I do this? So I may need to use my neighbor, my friend, a carpooling situation and we know that. And, and so we'll look at the best possible way to cohort these kiddos, but we're, we're definitely going to need parents to try to be flexible and adapt with us because... It takes a village and, and that some parents, as essential workers themselves, are just struggling with, how can I do this? So I may need to use my neighbor, my friend, a carpooling situation, and we know that. And, and so we'll look at the best possible way to cohort these kiddos, but we're, we're definitely gonna need parents to try to be flexible and adapt with us because, um, it's, it's going to be difficult. We can, that part we can guarantee and we'll, uh, try to accommodate in the best way we can for families and for those types of situations.
Thank you, Mrs. Reagan. Brian?
Uh, we have a new caller, Mr. Chairman. Be ready.
Uh, hello, my name is Gina. I have a student at the Treehead School. I had a question in regard to the remote, um, uh, flexible option. Um, and I understand for anyone, um, you know, it's really a personal decision, you know, whether or not they, you know, if you offer hybrid or in-person, whether or not they choose a remote learning, um, uh, scenario. With those remote students, would they be in a classroom with other remote students and assigned to a specific teacher? Or would they be, uh, part of a hybrid and/or in-person class and just doing everything remotely? And how is that going to be handled?
Great question, Deana. Mr. Malone?
I'll defer that one to, uh, uh, Ms. Reagan.
Um, well, again, it depends on the, uh, learning management system that we use. Our goal is that, uh, remember, there's still our Tewksbury Public Schools students, but it is hard. And I get, I think, just put quite simply from the commissioner is how can our teachers be in two places at the same time? And if a student is accessing a fully remote learning management system in our classroom is staying in walk step with the content objectives, but doing it through live and remote, but maybe not that learning management system, we're not sure at this point, how do we include them all as one class? So it is a personal choice. We realize some need to make that choice. Um, on, on that similar topic, because I, again, people are emailing me with questions because I can't get through. Would the, let's say the, a parent, um, chooses the Remote Learning Academy. Content is the same. Would there be opportunities for them to get support from their assigned classroom teacher? We, uh, certainly hope so, and that's something we're looking to plan. I, I don't want to make promises right now that I don't know the answer to, but that's a, a consideration we are definitely looking at. Will the remote teacher in a hybrid model be the same teacher that's the in-person teacher? That's a really great question too. The goal is yes, right? A classroom teacher, I'm just gonna say grade three, is the classroom teacher. So their, their class is their class. Their A cohort and B cohort is their class. So our goal is that that's the same teacher. Again, available staffing is a, um, a, a key variable in the rest of our planning for all the models.
Right. I, I think just to be clear, if a, if a parent chooses remote learning, their, how they learn and the structure of they learn and who they're interacting with the teacher likely is going to be different than the student who is participating in a hybrid model in a cohort. So it won't be the same student from a remote learning environment kind of just doing the remote portion of a hybrid model. It would be, and that's why we listed out, uh, the Remote Learning Academy and those pieces of that nature. So it, it would likely be different.
So then are you saying that if, if a parent chooses the remote learning, that the child then does not belong to a class or have an assigned teacher, but rather is just strictly remote with no instruction, with no, uh, assigned teacher?
No, we're not saying that at all. Uh, what we're saying is that it would be different than the teacher that's doing the hybrid. Uh, as you go back and look at the staffing issues, if we have twenty-five percent of staff who are not able to return, uh, many of those staff, I'm assuming, would opt to teach in a remote environment. And those would likely be.
And also if there were eighteen percent of parents who chose, you know, initially, and I, and I had to agree with the caller earlier that had asked, you know, or posed the question and, and so far as how that question was asked on the survey, um, because it was a little bit misleading. And I think that, you know, in the time that's taken, you know, what's taken place since the survey was first taken and what we know now, even scientifically or medically, is, is changed a little bit insofar as children and their, um, ability to be carriers, um, or to become sick with the virus. So there may be other parents now that think differently. Um, but if there were eighteen percent of parents that would choose a remote learning, um, platform, um, would they be then, uh, you know, kind of, uh, put together in a, in a classroom of sorts with a remote teacher? I guess is my, my question.
There, there would definitely be a connection of some matter of that. They're still gonna be responsible for atten- attendance, grading, all of those aspects. So yeah, what that exactly looks like, we don't know, but there would be some aspect of that, yes.
And we look back at, uh, remote learning, uh, back in March, and I understand it was reactionary. Um, but, you know, it was, uh, very disjointed, um, at, at best. So, um, you know, in hopes that the remote opportunity would be not only, you know, much more, um, organized, but, you know, to then have a, uh, a leader, a, a teacher, you know, a, a more, uh, accountability, especially for a, a young student.
Right. And, and, and I don't think we could agree more. I think we're all on the same page with that. I, I just, what we don't know is the staffing available, who that would be and what that specific structure would look like, but we agree totally with everything you just said.
I think it makes it hard. Like I said, it, for each family, we all have to make a decision with what's best for, for our families. But to have, uh, you know, the, 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 um, the, the decision, um, points to make our decision, uh, not very clear makes it that much more difficult, I guess is. So would there be an opportunity for us to have another, uh, option to speak to the school committee as things become finalized down the line?
Deana, you can speak to me anytime that you want. You can send me an email. You can send me an email. I'll be more than happy to talk to you. You can talk to your union, as we have explained throughout this process. Um, this process didn't just start today. Um, this process, you know, was an undertaking, a, a, a long time in the making. Um, we have included teachers right along. Um, we're not trying to make this decision in a vacuum by any, by any means at all.
You and I definitely respect everyone who's on the committee and trying to make a decision. It's a tough one for everyone, so.
Yep. All right. Thank you for your call. Brian, do you have someone else?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, no one yet, Mr. Chairman, but there were up there. Here's somebody right now.
Okay.
You're on caller.
Hi, how are you?
Hello?
You're on.
To, uh, comment and support our children's, uh, right to go back to school.
Okay, can I get your name and address for the record, sir?
Sure. Uh, my name is Stefano, S.T.E.F.A.N.O.
Yep.
Last name, A.U.R.I.T.I.
Okay.
And I'm at thirty-four Maribor Meadows Lane, Tewksbury.
Thank you. All right, sir, go ahead.
Pardon?
You, you have the floor.
Oh, great. Uh, so I don't know, I was gonna be on this early, but, you know, I really think that the approach that we need to take as a town is important. Not only to be safe, but also to do what's logical for our children. You know, obviously we've gone through tough times and we had to call up school a little bit early. Um, and we're all in a difficult spot, especially the teachers, given that they had to provide some remote learning that we may not have all understood what was going on tail and the teachers, you know, have been criticized up to now, potentially unfairly, and I understand that. But I think the social aspect of having our kids back in school is supremely important. Being part of the community and helping coach baseball, I have now been able to see how important it is to get our kids back together. We've done so safely, we've done in a great way. We've been able to mitigate any, if not all, cases from potentially sprouting up because of that. And our kids have been having fun, going to see their friends, and clearly that's been a big plus for us, especially from a relief standpoint, parenting, but also getting our kids out of the house. I do want to caution the teacher's standpoint. I know that at first it seemed like they were on board with safely social distancing inside the schools. And it seems like they've backtracked a little bit from there. And I understand, but if learning type of an atmosphere, it needs to be done at a very high level. Because if it is not, I believe the scrutiny that could come from that and the expectations that the parents have and other taxpayers in the town, we're gonna be very disappointed. And the ball's gonna be in their court. I want kids to go back to school safely. My child, that medical condition, which requires us to be cautious. But I'm confident in our town and our leadership to be able to provide that with the necessary means. A lot of the parents have spoken out, and I do know that the majority of them want children to go back to school. And I agree with that. And it seems that less than half of the teachers are comfortable. And I do understand the health risks, but we need to make sure that if we're gonna proceed, it's done in the right way. Because if we teach our kids this coming fall the way we did when the pandemic happened, it's gonna be completely unsatisfactory. So I want to caution them. If they're gonna push very hard to have this potentially be a full remote learning curriculum for the fall, winter and potentially spring, it needs to be on point. Because if it is not, I think a lot of us will be very upset and it won't be okay. And that's pretty much, you know, my standpoint on it and how I feel.
Hey, thank you for your input. Appreciate the call. Brian, do you have anyone else?
Uh, no one else, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. If we don't, as I try this again, within thirty seconds, get someone, um, I just want to thank all of you. I know we've been at this for a long time. Uh, I truly appreciate your, uh, patience, um, especially the people I see here that are just volunteers that are doing this, um, like we all are, uh, that serve in some kind of role uh, as the school committee or in other, uh, public services. Um, thank you very much for your time. Um, we are gonna have call in, and I do want to continue to urge people, before we get off the air, please have a question, it, it related to what transpired today and you're not sure, please email, uh, Assistant Superintendent Reagan or Superintendent Malone. If you simply wanna reach out and say, hey, this is how I feel and this is how I would like you to vote, please email the school committee. Um, you know, as I said from the outset, um, you know, this is of two young children, um, in the district and, you know, the, the burden of not only having those children, but everyone's children and the safety of everyone, um, is paramount to all of us. So, um, you know, we want to hear from you. Um, it's not disingenuous, it's not anything, but understanding that we always want to do what, what we think is right for our kids and the community. So, um, if you have anything further, uh, please send it along. Brian, do we have one more caller or?
We have no more callers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'm gonna, uh, turn to, uh, my vice chairman, Mr. Cutlass, to see if he would maybe like to make a motion. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting at this time. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn the Joint Virtual Task Force on the Reopening of Schools for 2020, 2021. Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. It's a unanimous vote. Thank you very much for all that participated today and, uh, for all those that called in and continue to be engaged in this process with us. Good evening.